All this meeting of the select board for July 11, 2022 to order. And we have our board all here present in the room, so we don't have to do a roll call. So I'd like to move right to the first item of business, which is the consent agenda. So I have a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda and noting that the town accountant warrant is plural. We have two warrants for that date.
All right.
All the rest is listed in the packet.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Are you sure?
You know, sometimes we do. Sometimes we do. Minutes, everybody cool with the minutes now? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. To the town manager for the town manager's report.
Okay, thank you. There are.
It's a pleasure to say that for the first time.
Yeah. So there are two reports in the packet. I will go through them as quickly as possible. I'm working from the July 8 report first. I wanted to note that we have established an internal risk committee with a goal to develop a culture of risk and risk threshold that can be used to effectively manage risk within town departments. This is becoming more and more important to anybody who followed the development of the budget. You would note that we projected a substantial increase in our property liability insurance policy, and unfortunately, that came to fruition. And so the more that we work on addressing risk and documenting best practices and the like, the better we have of receiving favorable increases going forward. This next item, I've said probably a dozen times, and it never gets old, but last week we had our first all-female officer patrol shift on, actually on July 6. It says June 6. We had, just by happenstance, all four of our female officers ended up on the overnight shift. We actually have six female officers in the department, much more than a lot of departments, but it was really something to see, four female officers on duty. And we got some positive publicity out of that, so that was particularly nice. The police department is seeking the public's help in identifying a suspect in connection with a break-in at the Exxon Dunkin' Donuts at 1098 Concord Turnpike. Let's see. Our CPW and NRC and Health Department staff attended some training relative to MS4. There's some information about that in the packet. DPLM director met with consultant JM Goldson and Regional Housing Service Office staff to review the information discussed at the last municipal affordable housing trust meeting, where we're looking for strategies to create additional affordable housing units so that we hopefully don't have a shortfall when the new census data impacts the number of affordable housing units required in the town of Concord. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Target Painting last Friday. That was a nice event, a good turnout for a Friday evening in the summer. Our trolley program is up and running, and I don't have any hard data, but it's been reported that ridership is reasonably well, and people are taking part in that, so that is nice to see. There's some information about the weekly, the three weeks worth of COVID cases. You can see in this report, there's a slight uptick, and probably we'll see even more of an uptick once we start reporting the 4th of July statistics. In the report from the prior week, I'll mention some staff items. We had a new police officer join the police department. Officer Charles Faminow completed his academy training on June 28, and he was sworn in on June 29. He is a graduate of Endicott College. While he was at Endicott, he was a student athlete, and he served as the assistant harbor master in Beverly. Officer John O'Connor completed a two-day Introduction to Crime Analysis course training at Roger Williams University. We have some new staff at the fire department. Firefighter Dan DeRoche graduated from the firefighting academy at the end of June. We have two other officers or firefighters that are in academy training right now, firefighter Elsa Heil and Tim Lilly, and they will be graduating on August 5. We have two additional openings in the fire department and are recruiting and interviewing candidates. We have a very good pool of candidates for those two openings. There's a note that the Cambridge Turnpike Project won the 2022 EEA Bronze Award Program for the work done there and the design. A note that we received $407,000 from the Mass Trails Grant Program for the Assabett River Bridge and Trail Project. That's very helpful. We'll use that in combination with the CPA funding to complete the design on that project. And I think I'll stop there because I'm probably running long and leave some opportunity for questions.
Sure. Any questions for the town manager? Go ahead.
Yep, okay. A lot of good news in these reports, which is terrific to see. I did have one question, however, about the Health Department report about foodborne illness investigation, and I was wondering if that's concluded? And I assume, maybe I shouldn't assume, do we suspend operations until that investigation is concluded?
So it would depend on, it would depend on the initial investigation, what the action plan might be. That actually is a result of an event that we had internal here. It was a retirement party that we had, and that particular incident is a result of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mary.
Good question. Carrie, you mentioned the trolley starting, and you don't yet have any data around ridership. Will we have that soon? Is that something you intend to track?
Yeah, I think we, I'll make a note and see if we can include that in this week's report.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All set with the town manager report? Okay. From the chair's report, I just have two items. First of all, on June 30, at 5:30, we swore in our new town manager at a ceremony held here in the hearing room, attended very well by town staff, and it was really a festive occasion. And that was required by our town charter, and so Carrie was able to take over as the permanent town manager on July 1, as scheduled. Also, though I think it would normally be part of a liaison report due to the strategic nature of the middle school building project, I just thought that I would note that the middle school building committee decided to wait until the 60% construction document phase to then consider any potential cuts or changes in scope to the project, because they're informed by the architects that they could be made at that time without additional cost. And that the school committee is meeting on Thursday to discuss and potentially provide a recommendation to the middle school building committee. Then finally, I have asked the co-chairs of the middle school building committee to attend our meeting of August 29 in person in order to discuss their view of the project and its next steps. Yes.
Sorry, one quick question. I did read that report with much interest. I guess the question I had, and it wasn't evident from reading the text of the summary, is whether or not that discussion about holding off until a later date to see where the estimate stood, whether or not that discussion included escalating the timeline for construction, because I read that that was part of.
You mean potentially deferring the project?
No, that the timeline had been accelerated.
Oh, yes, but that actually created a favorable budget impact.
They're in person, see? See them all?
Okay, so, yeah, there were a number of ways in which, in fact, the new estimate, if all things were equal, would have been more favorable. It had a smaller design contingency because you're further into the project. It included some elements of value engineering that were not included in the original element estimate, and the accelerated project schedule reduced the total cost because there's less money and time carried for the project.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's what I.
But nonetheless, it was still quite a bit higher than the prior estimate. Yes.
Well, thank you for inviting the committee in August. I think that will be good to have a discussion.
Yeah.
And you said at the 60% phase, they have another opportunity.
Yes, these are all regularly scheduled.
Right. And when approximately, is that in a few months?
I believe it's October we will receive it.
Okay. And my last question is, I remember, I think it was your idea, Matt, to add in that other contingency. There's about $2 million of bid contingency, but they've included that already in this estimate?
Well, that was one of the pro formas, but there was discussion in the committee meeting about the bid contingency being exactly that, used in the moment of bidding, so rather than budgeting construction. So that's still being discussed.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Mary.
So if I understand this correctly, we're.
And again, I should note that the middle school building committee and the middle school is not a topic for tonight's deliberation.
Right, right.
Okay, so I do realize it's a strategic project. I wanted to give people an update. We will have the co-chairs coming at the end of August. And I can answer a question if there's a question.
Having said that, it is the biggest project we've ever done, so we can talk about it for a minute, I hope.
It's an elephant in the room.
Okay.
It's the elephant in the room. So right now, we're like 5% over budget, and have we done any estimates that what the debt increase will be because of the increase in interest rates? Have we done it?
No, no, none of those. I would imagine that that would be something happening. I mean, that, in fact, the original estimates did include an interest rate that's comparable to what we are experiencing now.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, yeah. So unless they creep further up, that part is more or less, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for paying attention on that committee and inviting them here.
Okay, and sorry to usurp my liaison report, but.
No, it's fine.
Okay, so what I'd like to do now is to recognize Steve Ducren, town engineer, who will describe why we are not going to spend a whole lot of time on grant of location public hearings this evening, and how we can spend a lot of time instead on Junction Park. Mr. Ducren.
Yes, so Steve Ducren, town engineer. So I guess I should go into the conditions that have become a problem for National Grid. National Grids on occasion will submit a petition or grant of location, and then you'll have a public hearing. We will review, and engineer will review the plan and send your comment letter, include conditions of approval.
Yes.
And it's become standard for us to put in two conditions. One being where National Grid will file the plan with the DPU, that they will notify us. And the second one would be the new pipe at the end of its service life, be it 40, 50, 60, whatever it is, they will remove it from the road. So these are just two conditions of the rest of them, which have become standard, but National Grid is now having problems with those two. Those two conditions are essentially creating for National Grid to remove abandoned pipes so that we will have more room in the roadway for future projects such as stormwater projects, underground broadband, and so on. And so we started putting those back in 2020 when they were doing the Wallen Street project. And in order to get there, we had to hire an attorney to help us with getting some of the things that we wanted. We've since approved a couple of other projects, don't have a problem, but we have four before you that they've suddenly realized that these are no issues in the future. So we went back to the same attorney that helped us and who reviewed those conditions, and then reached out to National Grid's attorney, and we really haven't come to agreement as to where we should land. In the meantime, these conditions are causing a problem for us. It's causing delay of the Commonwealth Ave improvement project. So Director Card, in case you might be attending on Zoom, and I met with managing staff with National Grid on last Friday to try and make some sense of this, how can we move forward, especially with that project? And whereas the staff, they're still maintaining that these two conditions are problems for them, they're okay with moving forward with that project. So today, we received their final traffic plan, and we're in discussions about setting up a meeting with their butters, you know, within a couple of days maybe, so that they can mobilize and do their utility project so that we can continue with our road project.
That's a good immediate idea.
That's happening.
To those of you on Zoom, if you are not, to those of you on Zoom, please mute your microphones. Okay, sorry.
That's all right. So we're happy to note that it appears that we've been moving forward that project. That's a very important project. We have to get it done this year. Funding is tied to a grant that has a deadline and all of that. But in the meantime, we have to resolve these two issues. So I reached out to the attorney again today. Help us, help us get to the end point here. We have these outstanding grant of location hearings, and National Grid has more projects that they have.
Yeah, I think we have 10 total that are.
Yeah, so we need to know what, we want to do what's in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, thank you for your diligence and looking out for the town's interest and not just, you know, compromising in order to be expedient. Did I hear you say that National Grid has agreed to your conditions for the Commonwealth Ave project?
Those, that project was already approved, right?
Right.
Yeah, those conditions were already embedded in the Commonwealth.
I know, but then I, I'm confused. I know, you said it's being delayed because of these conditions?
Right, so they were supposed to start that project maybe six weeks ago.
Right.
And they haven't. And when we found out, the reason why is because when they noticed the two conditions in the pending approvals that were included, they said that was an oversight for them. So they were holding off until we resolved these issues. And, but they have agreed that they will move forward.
Okay, great. And my other question is, why are they suddenly, if these are standard conditions that we've had for years?
Not really, right? 2020 is when they introduced them, with the Walden, Walden Street.
2020 is the first time that you've put in the standard conditions of them removing the old pipe?
Well, let's not call them standard. We put in those conditions.
Okay, okay. And what was the other one? Removing the old pipe, the abandoned pipe?
Okay, so we've asked that new pipe going in, the proposed pipe, at the end of its life, it could be several decades away, when it becomes abandoned then, they should remove it. Whereas existing pipe may be grandfathered by whatever regulations there are, new pipe going in, we believe, should be removed at the end of service life. And the other condition has to do with if they were to file the project as an eligible infrastructure project with the Department of Public Utilities, we should know that because we want to look at that filing to see if they're claiming that.
Why are they objecting to that? It's, okay.
So anyway, I have to say, as we learn more about this, it's becoming a little bit, you understand, it's more complicated than it appears. The, an act was passed in 2014 that gave all utilities this ability to remove, not to move, to replace their leak in gas infrastructure and file with the DPU and get recovery costs based on that. And so, and hearings after hearings during those years that followed have added a lot of complications to the rules and regulations, and that's something that we as staff, we really need help from outside attorneys.
Thank you for staying on top of it.
Okay, and then the one thing I didn't hear from you is what the next date certain is for the hearing.
Right. Mike and I talked today. The last time we, we showed the attorney, we thought it would be resolved within a couple of weeks. It didn't, so we're not going to guess a date right now, so we put something that's out in August, August 29.
Okay.
Wasn't there some reason that the Commonwealth Ave project needed to be finished by the end of September?
Yes, that's the deadline for spending the grant money. We will have to get an extension from the state, but we don't think they will give us beyond the end of the construction year, which will be, you know, November.
Okay, all right. So I think then we can get a motion for the continuance.
All right.
And I think we're all set then for the other. Thanks very much.
I'm all here.
Mr. Ducren.
Thank you.
Okay, move at the request of National Grid. The public hearing scheduled for 6:40 PM tonight on its application for work between Bedford Street and Number 47 Davis Court is now continued until August 29, 2022.
At?
Oh, no, we don't have to have a time.
Really?
The time will be advertised and.
Lovely.
As advertised.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll worry about the others toward the end of the meeting.
Okay.
All right, so now let's recognize, I guess, Nat and Richard, the co-chairs of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee that has been working on the short and long-term solutions to, I guess, intermodal conflicts in the Junction Park. Okay, gentlemen.
Well, thank you, select board. I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight, but also thank you for giving us the opportunity to work through this neighborhood issue. And while I'm thanking people, I want to thank all the members of the committee who put in, you know, countless hours on this and did a really wonderful job of reaching out to the community, as I think you've seen in the report you received. I want to thank the town staff for all the support we got. We were pretty demanding, I feel it sometimes, and they really came through with the information we needed. And most of all, I want to thank all the residents who gave us ideas and concepts and their passion about making sure that we do the best job we could do on this issue. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our other co-chair, Nat, to make the presentation tonight. But again, I think this whole process has been really a good example of how a community can come together and discuss their things in a civil way and come up with some, hopefully, short and long-term solutions to a problem. It's the kind of thing that I like to see in Concord, and I hope we see more of in the national picture as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. So I'm going to take a few minutes and just review the charge, review how we engage the public, just so you get a sense of what we did to get input and deal with the questions that were raised, review the recommendations that we've made, there are three of them, and then answer any questions that you have. And Michael, if you're doing the slides, I'm on the charge. You asked us back in October to make written recommendations by June 30, which would include a conceptual redesign, a long-term conceptual redesign to ensure safety and separation of pedestrians and other users, in that case, we said those on wheels, and also a short-term approach that augments current signage and helps address increased ridership due to the completion of the Route 2 bridge, which was to be in July, but is now November officially. In your deck, I have a picture of where the park is. I'm assuming you know where that is. There is a map that kind of orients you. The one thing I would point out on this, on this map, is the MBTA tracks at the north part of Junction Park. The main entrance is on the south side. On the east, we have the 7-Eleven and Shopping Center, and on the west, we have Woodhill Table. So our process was first to develop a set of principles that would guide our work in terms of prioritizing and understanding the concepts. We had seven posted meetings of the full committee. We sponsored a site walk and a dedicated public forum for soliciting input. We appointed a subcommittee, which met eight times, to do some of the heavy lifting with regard to looking at the recommendations. We distributed a 10-question survey, to which we had over almost 570 responses and 800 comments from, it was 90% town residents. We reviewed kind of the history of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail and the Junction Park. We also, I met with MAST DOT staff and with MBTA executives to gather data regarding some of the adjacent parcels and to get some background. And then we collaborated with the town's director of planning and land management and took input from the Concord DPW director, town engineer, and town safety officer. The principles are listed here. The key thing is that we're trying to balance aesthetics with safety. We're trying to make sure we had all users involved, and you can read through these and be explicit about our trade-offs, and I won't go into those in more detail. The survey results are also listed here, and the 850 comments we got were very helpful in getting a sense of where people were. The findings on safety from the, from the, from the survey were that, first of all, according to the town safety officer, there's not been a pedestrian cycle escalation in the park since its opening, so let's knock on wood there. The survey asked for observations regarding safety, and 35% of those comments were that the park was safe or safety was not an issue, while 17% indicated that safety was an issue. So, you know, the perception of safety is subjective, and the committee recognizes that, you know, we need to pay attention to this because people are concerned. I kind of looked at the kind of two tribes, the bikers and the pedestrians, and we have to help those tribes learn how to communicate with each other and respect each other's needs. So we've come up with three recommendations for that. The first recommendation is a short-term recommendation, and we wanted to mediate the risk of the key safety problems, keep the current layout of the park without changing it, clarify where the rail trail goes through the park and how it leaves the park, and find ways to increase safety with less expensive, more easily implemented measures. And partway through, we kind of came up with this idea of shifting from a rules-based, shaming, blaming approach to the park to one that is based on personal accountability and sharing the space. I mean, you know, Concord is a town that is full of people who care, and people who come into the town, we believe people should be holding each other accountable rather than necessarily shaming and blaming. The short-term, thank you, the short-term recommendation, there are really two key things to it. One is, in the north end of the park, placing some planters to signify to folks in the, you know, going through the park, not to cross the railroad tracks, but coming from the south, turn to the left and follow the trail along. We also came up with the idea of a gateway, literally a physical gateway into the park that welcomes park users, whether they be pedestrians or trail users, and reminds them that this is a shared space and that they need to be thoughtful and accountable for what they're doing in there. So, and then the other, the other comment we got from the MAST DOT bike safety or bike ped specialist was that he felt, and he came out to the park, actually took a day to come out here and take a look at it, but that there were too many small signs that proliferated around the park. It's confusing, and he thought, you know, we should replace them with fewer signs and, you know, have carefully placed positive. Why did we choose this concept? And we had 10 concepts. They're in the full report. Concept number 10 is the short-term one. It required no major changes to the layout. It clarified the route with signifiers, and this was a word we learned early on from a number of people, including some folks in the Green Thumbs and others. Signifiers is a way to say, this is where the trail goes, and this is what you need to do. It aligned with the design principles we set forth, and this move from kind of shaming, blaming, negative reinforcement to a positive one, we felt was an important step. The long-term goals were to permanently address the safety issue by separating physically trail users from park users. trail users from park users, to stay within the footprint of the right-of-way, because there was some conversation about taking land or asking the MBTA, which had land to the west, whether we could use it. That was a pretty strong no from them. We had that conversation. And then if we were to make changes, minimize the impact of any structural changes to the rest of the park. And you can see in the diagram, we come up, the red line indicates the path that we've recommended, which is to essentially move along the west side of the park. And there's some discussion about you're building a raised portion over the retention basin. We think that this is a plan that is doable and makes a lot of sense and really kind of fits with the flow of the territory. So create a separate path on the west side of the park within the Bruce Freeman right-of-way and maintain as much as possible of the infrastructure. Now, why we chose number four was it maximizes separation and does it in a way that doesn't cause cross-traffic. It minimizes structural changes versus other changes that were looked at. It keeps trail users away from the commuter rail crossing, and I'll talk more about that in a minute. It continues to use objects and signifiers, and the idea of using the west side of the park, it's actually brought to the committee by members of the West Concord Green Thumbs, and we thought that was a great starting point because they have been really important stakeholders. They've been the guardians of the park for many, many years, and so we wanted to honor their thinking. And I think it turned out to be the right choice. And it was aligned with the design principles. The third recommendation relates to the MBTA crossing. This came up early. That is a significant safety hazard because it's basically open right to the tracks. 15% to 20% of the people have no idea that they're not supposed to ride across the tracks. They don't follow the trail. We have had one fatal accident there. And while this was not explicitly part of our task set forth by the Select Board, the committee strongly recommends that we take some action on this crossing. And so the signifiers in the short-term plan are one of the ideas. But we'd like to recommend that the town immediately engage with the MBTA to make that crossing safer by adding at a minimum flashing lights that are tied to the gates. We've heard that there have been lots of conversations about making major changes, but we think even just putting in lights at a minimum would be good. And that, I hope, is fast enough.
Yes, well, considering the amount of material, and I do know we have a lot to cover this evening.
Yeah, so, thank you.
So how I'd like to proceed is to, first of all, have members of the board ask any of their questions or make any of their comments, and then we'll turn to the members of the public, I think prioritizing those that are here in person, but also trying to recognize any of those that are on the Zoom who have used the raise-hand feature. So, questions from the board? Yes, Mary?
I can start. Great, thank you. First of all, thank you for this. This was very thorough, very collaborative. I think it was brilliant that you switched to positive messages rather than shaming messages, and the report was a delight to read. And we read a lot of reports, and this was good.
I have to give kudos to my editor and co-thinker here.
I've got a comment, and then I've got a suggestion. My comment is, I wonder if we could pull up the slide that actually shows, it's the slide that's, where is Junction Park?
That would be the third one in, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a Google map.
Yes, it's an overhead photo.
Yeah. I don't know, from the AV perspective, we can bring back up the slide.
Can you bring back up the slide?
Okay, yeah. All right.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is, we're saying that the planters will prevent people from riding into, let me finish.
Yes, thank you.
If you're coming from the south, going north, right, you come through Junction Park, and the planters are there, and hopefully they remind you that I'm going the wrong way and I should take a left, okay? If I'm coming from the north and I'm coming down, right, I don't see those planters until I'm way into the parking lot, way off the trail, right? So I don't understand how the planters or the overpass are going to prevent people from cutting across Concord Park and coming directly into Junction Park on their bike.
Right.
So that, to me, is a problem.
I think that's it.
That's my first comment. And then my second comment would be, I noticed that you're recommending a feasibility study, and this reminds me of the conversation we had around the Reformatory Branch Trail, where we thought a feasibility study was more, we had a solution, and we're thinking, how do we make this work? Or I think maybe what we need here is more of a needs assessment, kind of back up a little bit and think about, think more about what are the needs here, especially given what I just pointed out.
So when you said feasibility, could you point out?
Oh, I thought I saw that somewhere. Didn't I see that on the, I thought you recommended a feasibility. One of the versions of this, you're not recommending that, I guess, huh?
No, I think our recommendation is that we go ahead with, you know, one, two, and three.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw somewhere that you were recommending a feasibility study.
Yeah, undertake a feasibility study of, yeah, number Plan Four. That's what you're recommending.
Right, okay, so that's the long-term one, right, the long-term one.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is a feasibility study is a little bit ahead of where we are, and I think a needs assessment, which actually gets more community input. And again, I think what I pointed out earlier is a fatal, it's a problem with the design.
So, two things. So my newness to doing this, I use the word feasibility study, probably should have used needs assessment when we wrote it.
Okay, good.
Kind of thinking like, okay, guys, here you go. Now you figure out what happens next. And so the wording.
Maybe that's what I should have said, yeah.
I could just throw in one point. I think that's exactly what we were thinking. It's like, okay, now you've got, we've handed the ball to you, and the town staff will come up with like, you know, what kind of wording would we have in the signs? Where would they go? How would they be designed? You know, that kind of thing, and that might require some further input, obviously, from everybody involved.
Right.
But that would be then led by, with the prospect that this is what we're going to do. I think on the point you're raising, that people coming in from the park, I think that there, we had a little bit of discussion about that, and I agree that that's primarily focused on the fact that then people will come right down through the parking lot across.
Right.
There's a potential of, when you cross through the bridge, you know, when you cross the bridge at the river.
Over the shoulder break.
The shoulder break, right, to improve that, to create a visual block at that point, okay?
Exactly, yes.
That would be, you don't see really, you know to go around this way on the trail, and that's not necessarily apparent.
Right.
There's also a necessity to install a handicapped accessible spot there as well. And so it has to be coordinated with that because there was a curb put in that prevents people from Concord Park directly accessing the trail at that point.
Oh, okay.
So that curb is going to go away at some point, and when it does, we need to coordinate any way of, we can't just block that. But I agree, the report didn't go into detail on that particular issue.
Okay.
Okay, other questions from the board? Yes, Terry?
Well, first of all, thanks to the whole committee and the subcommittee for all your hard work. When I think about where we were a year ago, this was one of the most controversial and stressful and emotional issues in town. And now you have succeeded, I think, in, we'll hear from the audience to see, but it seems like it was a very collaborative process, very positive, and a lot of work went into it, and a real positive tone. So thank you for all of that. There's a couple of things. My first thing is a question. So in the recommendations, it sounds like you're saying to do the short-term design soon, right away. And then it seemed to me that you were recommending to do the long-term one, or are you looking to see if the short-term one is good enough and then do a needs assessment? And I'm a little confused on that.
So we actually had a conversation. Someone in one of the meetings said, well, if the short-term is okay, will the town actually invest in a longer-term solution, right? And the long-term solution is really the one that you should move to. As I recall from our meeting in October, and again, I am over 65, so my recollections may not be good, the request from the Select Board was, find a long-term, make a recommendation for the long-term. Oh, and by the way, do something with the short-term.
Okay.
So our long-term recommendation is where we think the town should go. It's going to take more time, more money, it's going to take more work to do it. So the short-term was, we've got a perceived safety issue in the park, and so what can we do in the short-term inexpensively and quickly to increase the safety as it stands now?
So to make sure I understand that, you are recommending a long-term solution, but you're recommending a needs assessment to do, to figure out the details of it?
So we're not totally, you know, connected with how the town does stuff.
Okay.
Right, so it's kind of, well, here's what we think should happen, here's a recommendation. And then we kind of assumed everyone who knows what they're doing, that Marcia and her staff and so on, would say, okay, got to do a needs assessment, as you said, Ms. Hartman, and then, you know, here are the steps you have to follow. Obviously, there's going to have to be design work, there's going to have to be public hearings, et cetera, but.
You know, the long-term talks about, you know, some kind of raised structure over the existing drainage system. If the town engineer comes back and says that, you can't do, we can't do that. It won't work. We'll have to move the drainage system. Well, then somebody, well, then that's going to cost, I mean, then, again, it's sort of up to the town.
Okay.
Folks to make that determination at that point, because we don't have that level of detail to know for sure.
Right, okay.
I just want to say, we did make recommendations, I mean, we thought about the layout. Some of the ideas had, you know, you have a couple of places where people will be crossing, which really doesn't make sense. So we tried to find something that minimized changes to the park structurally and met the safety needs. We had some really cool ideas, but I think the one that we've recommended does both that increase the safety and minimizes changes.
Okay, great. And finally, I just want to say that I'm really intrigued with your recommendation number three about meeting with the MBTA, particularly because we just found out that, I don't know any of the details of it, but there is a federal grant that is, I think I sent you a copy of that today, Nat.
I haven't seen my memory, I'm sorry.
Along with the infrastructure program, that is going to work on safety at railroad crossings. And this sounds perfect, from what little I know, okay?
Especially given the history there.
Yep.
All right.
So terrific committee work. It took a while for this issue to find a home, but when they did, they found a good home. So thank you not only for the process, but for the report. Excellent. I do have just a detailed question. I'm curious about who you met with at the MTA.
MBTA?
Yep, no.
The MTA?
Yeah.
They went down to New York.
At the MBTA, we met the Director of Real Estate, the person who's in charge of real estate. And Marcia, who is the second one?
Some engineer.
Oh, yeah, the head engineer. So we met the overall head engineer for the MBTA.
Wow.
I, yeah, because I like to network, so I found my way to him. And then he said, well, sure, we'll talk about it, and let me bring in the person who runs all of the land, essentially the person in charge of real estate, because we were looking at the property to the west. One of the ideas was, could we take four feet of that so that we wouldn't impact the park? They were pretty emphatic, no. But they were, I mean, they were very open to the conversation and.
Well, an act of the legislature could change that.
Of course it could, yeah, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, that's easy. We get those all the time, yeah.
I might have missed that emphatic no in the report. You might want to capture that just because, so someone doesn't revisit that territory?
Right.
Or what it would entail, what it would.
It's a practical matter. It takes away parking from the existing tenant.
Yeah, but what it would entail to, as you said, the legislation so far, it'll help.
In our minutes to one of the meetings, I explained the conversation, what they said, what their issues were with doing that. And I also, when we had the meeting the second time, Marcia attended because I felt it was important to have someone from the town, I don't know, upkiss about this stuff, and I wanted to make sure I didn't do something that was inappropriate.
Okay. Any other comments from board members, questions?
Yeah, I think everybody seems to agree that the long-term solution is the best one. And so what I'm thinking is, can we get some idea about the time and the cost that it takes to get from short to long, even if it's, you know, has some imponderables in it?
I hope so, because it's not Richard and I or the committee, but I'm assuming it's town staff who could take a look at it.
Well, I mean, at least it would be good to know whether it's something that will be difficult and expensive or something that will be simple and easy, because if it's simple and easy, maybe you can get there faster.
I tend to doubt anything like that as simple and easy. I'd love to think that, but I do, I mean, one of the things that we were careful about in October was we set a conceptual redesign because I was concerned about, you know, well, are we going to have to hire engineers and do all this stuff? So we wanted to keep it at a very high level, recognizing the explicit trade-off we're making is we couldn't answer this question of yours directly. Is it, you know, is it five or 10x, you know? But I don't know how the town goes about doing, you know.
Wouldn't that be the result of the needs assessment?
Yes, that would be.
We'd get that from the needs.
That would be what we'd have to conduct for that, right? I mean, I have to say that, you know, I am in that camp of, I don't know that I'm, is in favor of the long-term solution or the short. When I'm in that little space, I imagine myself being in a little slice of the Boston Public Garden, you know, and that any of the new avenue that would be made for the bikes, you know, would cut into that experience. And, you know, I am very hopeful that the short-term solution will have a positive impact, and perhaps with these enhancements that Mary suggested, I don't know, you know, maybe it's enough.
There were some members of the public who were concerned that this would be, that we'd do the short-term and we wouldn't move ahead. So I just want to.
Well, and I think what we should do is make a formal checkpoint. So in other words, that, you know, we don't just go, oh, hey, everything seems to be going fine, you know, that we instead set a date, and by that date, you know, decide, okay, is this working or not? And also, hopefully, in the meantime, have done some of the background work to understand what we're getting into for the long-term solution. Okay, so I think it's time to recognize members in the audience. So if there's anyone who would like to speak, feel free to step forward, announce your name and address and any role that you may have with any group, and then make your question or comment.
Hi.
Hi.
I've done this before. My name's Sabrina Haber. I live at 308 Oak Hill Circle in Concord. I'm speaking as the Vice President of the West Concord Green Thumbs. I want to thank the Select Board for making some time in this agenda, which is clearly very full tonight. I also want to thank the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee for all their work on the Junction Park conceptual redesign. It's really extraordinary. Well, and there's a lot to build on.
You can pull the mic right up here. It always helps.
Okay, is that better? I don't want to.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm specifically addressing the short-term plan rather than anything to do with the long-term issues. The Green Thumbs see safety right now going forward as really our number-one concern at Junction Park. And where, though I think there's a lot to build on from what you spoke about in the short-term design, and there are a lot of positives that you spoke about, we do believe there need to be some additional safety measures in order to make Junction Park safe for everyone. The Green Thumbs have been stewards of this space since we were instrumental in its opening in 2013, and our many volunteers have been maintaining these gardens since that time. We see the many people who use this park every day, whether they're on foot or on wheels, whether they're young or old, and whether they're moving quickly through the park or staying a while to enjoy the space. And they all need to feel and be both welcome and safe while they're in this park, whether they're there for an hour or for 30 seconds passing through on their wheels. In order to help make Junction Park safe for all users, the Green Thumbs would like to see in the short-term the use of some of the ideas in tactical urbanism. Tactical urbanism employs low-cost, temporary changes to the built environment which are intended to improve gathering spaces. Specifically, it is a design strategy which advocates that in an area where there are several different modes of transportation, for example, bikes, scooters, foot traffic, different types of inexpensive, temporary, and easily-installed deterrents or impediments. are used to slow down one means of transportation to provide safety for everyone. Using these concepts, the Green Thumbs would be happy to work with other stakeholders to develop specific workable recommendations for the Select Board to consider. Our goal is to create a short-term solution soon for Junction Park that is safe and welcoming for everybody who uses the park. And I think that we could build on the ideas that you guys have set forth, which sound an awful lot like.
So the question I'd have is, since there was this process with public meetings and everything, I mean, were these ideas brought up at those events?
Yes.
So why aren't they reflected in the report? Well, I mean, I guess what you're referring to is that this, they're not there and that you're now going to propose these new ideas. So I guess I'm curious how they're not reflected already.
You know, in the report, it sounds like they're talking about a few planters in the north end. But I think, I think it needs to be some clear deterrence to help. Thank you.
I, I think we're looking for some clear impediments and some really thinking on the ground to help those who are moving quickly through the space to slow down. And, you know, beyond signage or beyond personal accountability, which is all very nice, but I'd like to, I think the Green Thumbs would like to see something that really encourages people to slow down on their bikes.
Right. And you've, you've stated this before and it was rejected? I mean, I guess I'm just curious why, I mean, I've thought we're reviewing the final recommendations of the committee that we charged to do this. And I mean, you're saying, no, we're not done. We got to go back and do V2. Well, I mean, I'm just curious why.
So the idea of tactical urbanism, there was another word that, that we heard, we heard for it about like putting in tables or putting in obstacles that would slow people down. And so we did consider that. And one of the things we heard from the safety perspective is that when, when, you know, bikers would come in, they say, look, if I see someone, I slow down. Right? I don't, I don't do something. So the thought, and we, we heard from members of people, or if you throw tables and stuff in there, it's going to, it's really, you know, it's potential for people running into them, so on and so forth. So we did consider the idea of tactical urbanism. And so our recommend, we thought about it. We came up with this idea of personal accountability and, and making people, both making people accountable for, for safety and also because there had been no accidents up to this point. We felt that the idea of the signifiers and keeping the park relatively open would, would do it. So that's, I guess, the best answer I have.
So like to enable people to ride through the park if there is nobody there? Is that the idea?
If you, if you sit in the park, and I know Ms. Keo and others have spent a lot of time kind of watching people go through. I mean, we have some numbers from the survey about how many times, you know, what percent of the time people see people riding or not riding. It's in the report. You can take a look at it. But the, if there's nobody in the park, people tend to ride through. If there are people in there, I think sometimes people get off or they slow down or they, they watch out. And so it's the biker tribe, pedestrian tribe issue that came up. I think there's, and, you know, we said, safety is a perceived issue. And thank God, nothing's happened at this point. And, and I think our, our take on kind of filling the park with objects to force people on wheels to slow down kind of got into this issue of aesthetics versus, you know, trying to achieve the, the, the goal of, of safety while also balancing aesthetics. I don't know if you want to add anything.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, the, the notion of, of what we proposed, I think has those elements of this. In, in other words, when you come in by the Club Car Cafe, you're going to be encouraged to, here, now you're in a different space. You don't just whip around the corner. The idea of having an entryway into the park when you cross Main Street is part of the signifier that you're in the park. The notion that putting specifically tables and/or chairs around, they will be moved and they will be moved to who knows where over time. And that some people on a bike might think they could get through there and then would run into something that otherwise they could go through safely.
I mean, isn't there a fixed table already there?
Well, there is one in, there's a picnic table. Right, right.
I mean, it seems like there's a precedent for these objects.
Those could be seasonal because then in snow times, when you have to remove snow, you don't want to have a bunch of tables and chairs hanging around. I think it was, is seen as, as a, a solution that would be potentially creating more safety hazards than there are currently. By putting in.
I mean, I guess I would just think that in terms of signifiers, that, you know, if you're, if you're on a bike and you see a bunch of tables, your sense is, oh, I probably shouldn't be on my bike.
Right. We made a choice.
Which is probably, you probably shouldn't be, right, in that space.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't know. It seems.
Right. The subcommittee and the committee made a choice on a recommendation. We, we considered that. And, and so when, when one makes the decision to go one way, one naturally says no to the other, other thing. So our recommendation was not to do the tactical urbanism.
To that extent.
But, but use some signifiers and accountability. I'm not saying it's right, but that's what we came up with after a lot of deliberation and looking at all the data and, and et cetera. And I'm sure there are people who disagree.
It seems like we're kind of in early days of that, you know, we could have a, some heavy objects that could be moved around and, you know, see what works. I mean, we call it rapid prototyping in my industry, but, you know, try stuff out. See what works, you know, I, anyway.
Well, I, I think the, the point of rapid prototyping, I think, would go very well with, with tactical urbanism. And the point is that, that they do design on the ground and they, they, you know, they maybe put something somewhere, look at it and say, no, this doesn't work. But I, I do agree, tables and chairs strike me as extremely dangerous and much too mobile. And that they'd get left in, in positions that would be dangerous. They should be objects that can't be moved at will.
Yeah, yeah. I, I get that.
Mobility issues.
Okay. Do we have other members of the audience who would like to speak? If so, please step forward, state your name and address and any organization you represent.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Weeks. I'm living with my dear ma when I'm in Concord and 100 Newbury Court. Nice to be here.
So are you a Concord resident?
Yes.
You are?
Yep.
Okay.
I was born here. And, you know, Concord's been home and home away from home over my 70 years.
Okay, I just don't know if your address is Concord.
Yeah, 100 Newbury Court Apartment 52.
Okay.
Now, with my mother, Mary Weeks.
But I mean, is that your mother's apartment or your apartment?
It's my mother's apartment, but that's where I stay and where I receive mail.
Okay. And you're here to talk about the Junction Park?
I'm sorry?
About, you're here to talk about Junction Park?
No. No, no, no.
Oh, okay. Where, the current agenda item we have is the changes to Junction Park?
Okay, I thought you were asking for a response.
No, we have a public comment section to the agenda at the end of the meeting.
Sorry.
That's on any topic at that point. Okay. Sorry.
No, no.
Yep. Come on up and introduce yourself and.
I'm here to tell you a story, Keo, and I'm not speaking, but I know that, that Jean Goldsberry, who's the head of the Committee on Disabilities, has made a special request. She can't be here. She's recovering from a shoulder surgery.
Okay. Is there anyone else that's present in the audience?
She's on it. Well, I just wanted to make sure that she be recognized because I know.
Sure. No, but I just was, the process we had, we were, we were going to have any audience attending speakers and then move to the Zoom. Yes.
Come on, Steve. Thank you. Steve Arza, 39 Cottage Street, resident. Yeah, I'm an avid cyclist. I'm also an avid park lover. So, and I feel like this West Concord Junction Park is, is a real gem and a real benefit for the community and for meeting space. And, and safety, again, is a priority. So I agree with the prior speaker. I just, the only additional thing I can add is that the park as it is now and the trail it is, as it is now, is not what it will be. We, we know once it, the bridge is connected, that we'll have a lot more usage. Using the Acton rail, part of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, I, I did notice recently a pretty fast-going e-bike. And then I've also seen e-scooters in the Concord side. So, you know, I just want to point out that we, I think there'll be a proliferation of e-bikes in the future. I was out west recently and saw a lot of e-bikes. And they go a little bit faster than the traditional bikes, faster than I can ride. So that's something to keep in mind in terms of the park and, and, and usage of bikes going through. I, I applaud the long-term solution. And I think short, in the short-term solution, we really ought to keep, look at deterrence. And I don't, some of these riders, these e-bike riders, they're not going to read signs and they're not, they don't really care about the Concord ethic. You know, they're not from Concord. So, so that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's here present in the audience? Okay. Then turning to the Zoom, I do see Ms. Goldsberry. And I'd like to recognize you to speak, so you can unmute and speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And kudos to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Group for all of the work that you've done. I know you had many, many meetings. I attended a number of those, especially the public hearing meetings. And I know that your group was very dedicated to trying to find good solutions to this problem. That said, I do have a concern on behalf of the Commission on Disabilities. I'm currently the chairperson of the Concord Commission on Disabilities. And, and we have met and discussed this at a number of our meetings. And we do have a major concern that if, if there is not something that will help to physically slow down the bicycle traffic, there, it, it, it's an accident waiting to happen when a toddler steps in front of a bike or a person who, who can't hear doesn't realize a bike is coming up behind them or a person with a cognitive disability that doesn't understand, they can't walk in a certain place at a certain time. So I think that having something that will help to calm the, the bike traffic as it goes through the park would be a benefit for everyone. I agree, tables and chairs might not be the best choice. Maybe fairly large, heavy planters could add to the ambiance of the park as well as provide some traffic calming for the bicycles as they go through. It's our sincere wish that the, that the town of Concord and that the Select Board strongly consider something in the urban, urban tacticalism and, and traffic calming to help to physically slow down riders as they go through. I agree, many people will be very careful and conscientious and thoughtful of others. But that, that might not be everyone and it only takes one bike. And if there is an accident with a pedestrian, it won't go well for the pedestrian and it won't go well for the bike rider either. So in order to keep things safe, the Commission on Disabilities unanimously supports providing some traffic calming devices, whether it's planters or something else, that would help to deflect the traffic a little bit and slow it down as it comes into the park from both directions. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other members on Zoom that would like to speak? I want to note that we are over time and we do yet to hear from the Chief of Police this evening. And I hate to hold up the Chief of Police. So any, any other comments? I don't think I see anyone else with their hand up. So now I think we do need just some brief deliberation here on the board. And what I would like to suggest is that, I mean, there's been some significant feedback, starting with Mary, the Green Thumbs, the Commission on Disability. But I also don't know that it's fair to send the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee back. And I also recognize that the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee is not the organization that will implement these changes. It's our town staff. And so therefore, you know, I hope, I do see our, our Director of Planning and Land Management here in the room, that what I would like to ask is that a plan, you know, an actual implementation plan of these, of the short-term changes and the, and in the case of the short-term, really the feasibility of doing it because it would have to come out of current budget, whatever's being done, that, you know, we understand to get a report back as to, okay, how and when can we make these changes inclusive of any of the improvements that we heard about tonight? Because I don't think it's the last word on the subject. As I, as I was mentioning earlier, I suspect that there are additional new ideas coming in and that while they don't invalidate the work that's been done, they may enhance it. And so if that's a reasonable request, and I, I'm really gesturing over to our town staff member, I would like to propose that. I don't know that we actually need a formal motion on that point, but I don't know.
Can, can we have a timeline for that?
And a timeline. Well, I, I would also look to town staff to propose a, a, you know, feasible timeframe.
Marcia, are these things that you know now or do you have to come investigate and come back to us?
A date to give a date.
And, and whether it's feasible in the current budget?
Well, there is no budget currently for implementation. But I would identify that the, this year's town meeting approved $30,000 as part of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail work to add enhancements. And that would be a source of some funds. And so I have started looking at different types of planter designs and trellis designs to see what we might utilize. Concerns that Public Works will raise is removing any planters for winter maintenance and snow removal purposes and where will they store this material? So those are questions that have not been addressed and still need to be addressed.
Right. But those are only questions that town staff could address, I think. Because I don't believe the BFRT has the.
You're absolutely correct. And so if you are accepting the report from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee, then my next task would be to go back to town staff to say, what can we put numbers to? What can we put a timeframe to and bring that back to you?
Can I ask a question? Are you saying just the short term for now, just looking at the short term?
Absolutely, short term. I think we would need to have an engineer or design consultant actually look at what is involved with that conceptual design and sort of estimate out, give us a ballpark figure for what it would take to design it. And then possibly even get a preliminary estimate of what it would cost to construct it. With, you know, there were a couple of options for the long term.
The long term would have been another budget year. Yeah.
Yeah.
For the short term, I wonder, can we also include some of the recommendations that we heard tonight? Just far as the short-term solution, besides just what was articulated in the report?
They mentioned, but I, what I heard mentioned was tactical urbanism. And there is a group of people that do that kind of work. So I'd want to talk to that group to see what might be involved in it and what makes sense. I mean, we're only dealing with a path that is 13 feet wide.
Yeah. What I'm, what I'm talking about though is, we did talk about people coming from the north when they're, so that they don't go into the parking lot in front of Concord Park. If there's some kind of deterrent, we can put there. So I would like that included in, in a short-term proposal.
Okay. I think with that, I do, I don't think we need a motion on this, right? It's, we're accepting the report.
So you've, okay, if, as long as you're accepting the report, then we can move forward.
We could say, we can move to approve, we can move to accept the report of the.
This modification.
Well, yes, I think that that's, it, it doesn't imply the solution, right? It's that we, they've completed the task, right?
Okay. I understand.
Can we ask that we hear back in 60 days?
Can we ask that we hear back from you in 60 days? Yes. I mean, again, I know the season is time-bound, you know, that like the next 60 days are actually prime time. So, but yes, I mean, I, I also don't know what would be, I mean, there's nothing else we could do. Okay?
In 60 days, we can hear back that we need 30. In 60 days, we can hear back that we need 30.
Well, okay. All right, well, let's cross that bridge when we come to it.
At least everybody stays aware.
All right. Okay, then, I thank you for your work. Thank you for completing the report. Also, you know, your further input. I know that we have had committees and task forces in the past make reports and think they were done, and in fact, keep bringing them back to talk to us.
I am not under the illusion that we're necessarily done, but we look forward to working with the town staff and being whatever help we can within the, within the bounds of our charge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. And if you, we're only here for this topic, feel free. And we will now move to our Chief of Police, Joseph O'Connor.
Did we take a vote on the move to accept the report?
I think, do we need to have voted?
No. No, we're, okay.
Terry, what do you think?
I mean, there have been other times when we've insisted on taking a vote to accept the report.
There were other times.
Too mushy.
Okay.
I'm worried.
Also, there are two different things. One is...
You know what I mean? I'm a little bit concerned that if we vote to move to accept the report, we've limited ourselves to what the report says.
Well, actually, that's what I was going to say. There's two different things. One is moving to accept the report and thanking the committee. The other one is moving to adopt the recommendations in the committee.
Right, right. I think all we're doing is accepting the report.
So maybe we should just move to accept it.
All right, move to accept the report of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee and the improvements to be made to Junction Park.
With gratitude.
With gratitude.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chief?
Good evening. And sorry for the delay, but that was an important bit of business. No, I know, I know it was, it's important to a lot of people in the community, and we're watching it as well. I'm Joseph O'Connor, and I'm the Chief of Police. With me tonight is Lieutenant Brian Goldman, Lieutenant Kevin Monahan, and Captain Tom Mulcahy. They're members of the command staff, which means they are outside the bargaining unit. I know in the past few weeks, you've had a couple of members come up, talk about the opera, opera funds and so forth. But I couldn't do what I, what I do without, without them, and greatly appreciative of them. And I also say, the, the union that was up here, the members, very deeply appreciative for the work that, that they've, that they've done every day, particularly through, through the pandemic. So we had a couple of things that we were going to bring up and just give you a quick update, be respectful, very, try to be very respectful of your time. I know you're running over.
That's all right. We do want to hear. And we don't get many chances, so this is really great.
Yeah, well, you can have as many chances as you like, because we're always happy to come here. But I'm going to give this to Kerry. This is a very important year for the Police Department. This is the 150th year of the Concord Police Department. And we're very, we're very proud of those. We're passing around their, what we call challenge coins, commander coins. But this coin is for each one, each one of you. You play, you play a role in, in public safety in, in the town. And you're certainly, I think, one of the things that I'd like to leave here tonight with you thinking about, is that every group that comes up here and speaks with you, the vast majority is some connection to the Police Department. And, you know, I've heard someone a long time ago, you know, people talked about blue lines and this and that, and I think it was Charles Ramsey, who was a former Philadelphia Police Commissioner, talked about the thread, a blue thread, how it weaves through society. And every department in town, and Alan was up here, Alan Cathcart, a few weeks ago, and he was presenting about, about the roads program. And I was sitting at home watching, the roads program, public safety, the importance of our roads for not only motor vehicle operators, but for the other people who use the roads, bicyclists, runners, and other pedestrians and so forth, how all, all that, all kind of, everything kind of weaves, weaves together. Council on Aging, our elder officer responding to calls for people in need and so forth, our school resource officers, you know, working, working with the schools. So we're, we're highly involved with, with every, every department in town, social agencies and so forth. And I'll try to run through some of this, and then I'm going to have the captain speak about the police reform. Lieutenant Monahan talked about the patrol. He runs the uniform officers. Lieutenant Goldman commands the special services unit, which is our detectives, our dispatchers. And, and what's very important, one of the things, one of his roles, he's the accreditation manager. And, you know, this is really something that we're very proud of, and I'm going to let him, him speak on that, because I know the board has some questions about that. But that is, that's an achievement that we're very, very proud of, and it took a real team effort to get that done. So like I said, the department is now 150 years old. I think I am the ninth chief in that 150 years.
Wow.
So there, there were some very long-serving chiefs over the years. And I think it says, you know, a lot about this community and the stability of this community. I want to just touch on the pandemic, just to, again, thank the officers for what they did, but some things that they did that people may not know of. There were some officers for a period of time that brought, brought lunches into Boston for some of the students that weren't, weren't coming to school. Picked up seniors and brought them to doctor's appointments, picked up some medications for people at some of the pharmacies, and delivered, delivered to, to people. We also learned a lot of different ways about delivering our service, too. We wound up issuing officers' cell phones in cases where we didn't want to have face-to-face contact, or people didn't want to talk to us face-to-face. We were able, able to call them and talk to the individual officers while they're out on the, out on their beat, and then take, take some reports over, over the phone as well. We're trying to transition back to be more with people, interacting with people, because that's something that we really feel that, I don't say it's lost, but it's important for us to have those personal interactions. And we're starting to feel like we're getting, the picnic in the park on July 4th was a, was a good example of that, the turnout there, and particularly a number of our newer officers that were able to be there and meet people for the first, first time in the community, which, which that was really great. Our youth police academy began, began today, so it's been a couple-year hiatus since that. But we have about just over 20 young people from the town that are getting an orientation, a little flavor of policing and learning of what policing is about. So these are, you know, young, young people, 13, 14, 15 years old, that are at the station with, with officers. They'll take a couple trips, they'll visit the state police horse barn and do some, do some other things, but they'll learn about, about policing, about different agencies. DA Marion Ryan was at, at the station today and spoke, spoke to the folks, and it was really, she did a, a game with them about behavior and responsibility. And it was really, it was very interesting, sitting in the room, listening how tuned-in the young people in our community are, and how thoughtful they are when they give their answers. It was very, very impressive, and we're really happy to have, have the young people back. We've got good reviews over that through the course of the years. We're hoping to bring back our citizens' police academy this year. You know, we're mindful that the fall, you know, trying to watch some of the COVID numbers to see what happens. We, you know, we want to be respectful of those things of bringing people back into the station. But, you know, hopefully we'll be able to do that. That's something we've run a few times and has been helpful. Our current staffing situation, I know the board is, has referenced this a couple of times. We are sworn staffing, authorized staff is 36 officers. We're down three officers right now. Tomorrow, we're interviewing someone, we have some other candidates in the pipeline. So it's our hope that we get back up to, up to full, full strength. You know, our officers do, they step up and they, and they fill the shifts when we need them. You know, things have changed since I became a police officer. I was, became a police officer in 1986 full-time, so it was quite a while ago. And myself and my colleagues, we used to like to chase the overtime and, and make the extra shifts. That has changed with our workforce. Our workforce is different. They've, a lot of value on their personal time, the things that you hear about other, other sectors, that certainly applies to, to us, us as well. And, you know, we try to address those needs, be respectful of our employees, because we do want to try to retain people as much as we can. When we lose officers, we find that they're going to larger agencies, more opportunities. We had three officers leave for the state police recently. It's a larger agency. Opportunities in different units and so forth that they could get into, things that we just can't offer. And we had two, other two officers who this past year went to larger agencies that Cambridge and Metford, and it's a, the city is a little bit of a different market than what we have out, out here in the suburbs. So we do continue to hire quality, high-quality people, and when you hire high-quality people, they're, they're in demand. And most, the vast majority of people that leave are going on to opportunities that they see as bigger opportunities for them. We currently, of our 30, 33 people that we have working for us right now, six of them are female. And I mention that because the other night, we had our first shift that had all female officers, and the response to that, when we put that on social media, was incredible. I think it was probably the number-one post that we had on Facebook. Our Twitter reach went out to about 365,000. We got a lot of positive comments. I've gotten some emails from people around the country about that. The only thing that I feel sad about is our other two officers weren't able to work that shift and, and share in that, that experience. And I think that's important to mark those types of milestones, particularly in our field, which is predominantly dominated by, by males historically. I think across the country, 13, 12 and a half to 13%, I think, of law enforcement and officers, or police officers are, are female. So I think that was really, really something. It wasn't something that we set up, and it happened organically. And, you know, we're, we're really happy that we're able to do that and share that information with you tonight. We have six special officers that are sworn, and they are retirees from the department, and they're able to help us particularly with, with details and occasionally some special assignments when we need them. They all have the post certifications, just like the full-time officers. In the next few years, if we have more retirements, it'll be, it'll be very helpful as we approach the, the 250th, which is going to be a very large, large event. And we're going to need all, all hands on, on deck for that. I think we go back in history, I think the first, first hundred years, there's, there's a reference to it in, in a historical document, that 50,000 people showed up in the town. The department was very, very small at that time, and I think there's a, you know, possibility that we see quite a few people visiting our town again. So we, we look forward to that. Have started some training. It was mentioned in one of the reports that was sent last couple of weeks. Lieutenant Goldman, Captain Mulcahy, went to some training sponsored by Memer, of planning for special, special events, which will be a, we'll be working with our other partners too when that time comes. You know, just so you know, we have strong partnerships with our state, state and federal partners who we're in contact with, with all the time, and we're always monitoring different things that are going on. For example, some of the hate literature and so forth that's being passed around other communities. We've had that here in the past. We've had that group Patriot Front sticker, the center before. We've had other people put literature out there. So we're, you know, we're always looking, looking at those things, sharing information, trying to stay, stay on, on top of, top of those issues. And also, since we're on MNTV, is say, we do have openings for our school crossing guards. That has been something that has been very difficult for us to hire. I think it was when the Personnel Board raised the rate, I know the board, there was comments about what the, what the hourly, hourly rate was at. At $30 an hour, we still cannot fill those positions for, for school crossing guards. And what that happens is we have to have assigned officers off of, off of patrol to those posts to ensure that those children and parents are safe. So if there's anybody out there watching tonight, please, and they have, have an interest, you know, it is fulfilling to, you know, have those smiles going by in the morning and afternoon. We'd really appreciate if there are some people that want to step up and, and help us with those, those jobs. Mental health is a, continues to be an issue in the community. Back in, in 2016, we entered into a partnership with surrounding departments in the Concord District Court, and with the, and with the Elliott Social Services and a caseworker. So we have Emily Black, who is a licensed social worker that works with us at a minimum of one, one day a week, if, if not more, doing a co-response with our officers go. When we have people that have experienced, we get any information, mental health or substance abuse, substance abuse issues, or anything else that we think that we can make a referral, we try, we try to do that. Just to give you, give you an idea of how, how we're trending, in 2020, we had 19, 16, 69 mental health issues that the clinician was involved in. Last year was 87. This year, we're halfway through the year, we're, we're 72. And it's not surprising to us with the COVID isolation, those types, those types of things. You know, it's, it's really an issue that we continue to try to, try to address. In President Obama's 21st Century Policing Report, it was written in there about crisis intervention teams, and suggested that about 10% of your officers should be trained in that. Well over 90% of our, our department is, is trained in that, and it's, some of the newer officers that are coming on will get that training. So it's something that we really think long and hard, hard about, in getting our officers, you know, different, different tools to try to de-escalate situations. And, you know, we're very fortunate to be able to do that in, in, in most cases. You know, the mental health calls, you know, these don't count, the hundreds of calls that we sometimes have to go up and support hospital, hospital staff in the emergency room with, you know, being a regional hospital, that a lot of people come here, and we're happy to help the hospital and anyone else when, when they need, need some help. Our partnerships continue with Domestic Violence Service Network. We're averaging around, you know, between 50 and, and 65 domestic violence issues a year. And we, every report is evaluated at the, at the morning. Lieutenant Goldman, or if he's not in, his designee Sergeant Young, review those reports and make sure they go off to Domestic Violence Service Network, so that an advocate can, can reach out to those individuals and try to support them, whether it's down, down at the court, or finding other services for help. Communities Restorative Justice started here about 22 years ago in our, in our community. It has spread out, become a much bigger player in the restorative justice arena in, in the Commonwealth, and is something under police reform that the legislature thought was very important. They're now in Suffolk County, and out also in central Mass, around Amherst, South Hadley, Hadley, that, that area as well. We do refer cases to them as well. We have one interesting case that, that they have right now, where someone's flag, Black Lives Matter flag was, was vandalized in town, and the person that was harmed, and the person that did the harm have agreed to go through that process, which we think is, is really good, because if, you know, quite frankly, if we take it down to the court, we don't think all, all that much would have happened in the court. So it's, it's definitely a worthwhile program, and we can, can use it. NEMLEC, the Northeast Municipal Law Enforcement Council, is something that we belong to. It's a very important partnership in Concord. Again, back in around 1968, was a founding, founding member of, in that group. It's now up to about 59 communities and two sheriff's offices, a regional SWAT team, motorcycle unit, school threat assessment team, and incident management team, which people that are experts in incident management. And I think when we, again, we get to the 250th, they will be helping, helping us with that, when that, when that time, when that time comes. And we have had to, not that very often, had to have NEMLEC come into, into the town and help us with a lot, large-scale unit. But back in 2018, on Patriots Day, we had a couple of groups in town, up in the national park. And I believe having that deterrence in, in the community and pouring rain helped de-escalate that situation. You know, we continue to work on the pillars. I don't, I want to be respectful of your time, but not getting all the pillars of the 21st Century Policing Report. But we do try to keep up on training and education. The Commonwealth, historically, was, spent very little in, in police training. We used to be 48th in, in the country. And, you know, fortunately, you know, we've always been able to have some money in our budget to get, get people training and so forth. But we continue to do that. And we also think that keeping our officers trained and sending them some specialty training from, from time to time also keeps them fresh and, and... from time to time also keeps them fresh and reinvigorated by some of the trainings that they get. Social media was one of the things that was recommended in that report, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of that. We're on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. We try to put, we try to put things out, put things out on the website. We also utilize the town's news and notices. And we're going to try over the next year or two years, try to improve some of the things and listening to some feedback. I think one of them, Chair, was about our police log and that it's not that robust. And, you know, part of that is the, is the...
Well, the Journal is not performing the service that they used to of interpreting the police log and sort of elaborating on it. But, and so I know that you just, you're, you have a sort of statutory need for a police log, and that's mainly what, the main purpose of it. It's not really to reach out to the public.
That, 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 that one isn't necessarily that tool, but we do know that there are people that do want to see those things, particularly if we put something out, you know, about something going on, whether it's happening in the area or so forth. So we recognize that. You know, our records management system is starting to, starting to age. We had talked about that and some capital planning. We've kind of put some of that on hold with the, with the rec and some of that work, when the right timing is going to be to make sure our system comports with what Acton has. And the technologies continue to get better and better every, every year. You know, but right now, it works for us, but it doesn't do maybe necessarily all the things that people want to do. The last thing I'm just going to touch on in the report is, is the report talked about changing the mindset from warrior to guardian. And I believe that the Concord Police have been really, historically been guardians in this town, had that mindset for a long, long, long time. I mean, our officers will do, do things that in many communities they won't, from the most serious crime to a bat being in a house in the middle of the night, our officers will respond and help. You know, maybe a little thing, but when somebody's home and that's happening, that's the biggest thing in the world to them, and we'll, and we'll help out with that. Sustainability is something that we're conscious of, even though some of the directives that have come out, particularly about emergency vehicles, necessarily apply to public safety. But, you know, in two thousand fourteen, is, you know, sitting with the Energy Futures Task Force, I committed, and Chris Whalen at the time was the town manager, that when things came on board, we would certainly try to do that. The vast majority of our marked fleet are hybrid vehicles. We have a Tesla, but we are waiting, we are victims of supply chain. And we're waiting on lights and some other things. We have a Mark E, Ford Mark E electric vehicle in the fleet that I'm driving, and we expect to have another one hopefully within the next, next month. We recycle drugs. We have a drug in shops, two kiosks in our, in our lobby. Over the last two years, we've dropped off two thousand pounds for destruction of that thing. So that is really serving people in our community. And a lot of times, you will see a lot of people coming into our lobby to get rid of those. If you're driving down Wall Street, I invite you to stop and take a look at our improvements in our landscape, our pollinator garden.
All right.
It's looking, it's looking, it's looking really, really nice in our facilities. Department did that for us, and they did a very nice job with that. Recently, you may have heard about the active shooter hostile event response training that was done with the fire department over in Sudbury. That got some media attention. You know, I'm happy to report that our officers performed very well in working with the fire department. You know, we really take a real team approach to public safety with our fire department. And what this training did was, time is the essence. Anytime one of, one of these type incidents happen, it allows us to set up a hot, warm zones for firefighters and EMS to go in and assist people and get them to hospitals right away. And, you know, hopefully, we never have that in our community, but we should, we should, we train, we train for that. And our officers are very well-equipped to handle a lot of things, and they have very, very good equipment. And, you know, we continue to train and, like I said, I'll knock again, hopefully that never happens. Continuing on to the terrorism and hate groups that are out in the area. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Mulcahy to talk a little about post, but there's also a nexus from him to the terrorism issue. He currently serves as our liaison to the FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force, which helps us facilitate information. Captain?
Thank you. I'm Captain Tom Mulcahy. I'm going to speak briefly on the Post Commission. In December of two thousand twenty, Governor Baker signed into law the Police Reform Bill in Massachusetts. And the law creates a mandatory certification process for the police officers in the Commonwealth. So for the first time, Massachusetts will have a system to certify and decertify police officers. The Peace Officers Standard Training Commission is what is referred to as POST. It was established as part of the Criminal Justice Reform or the Police Reform Act of two thousand twenty. POST Commissions exist in most states elsewhere across the country, and now Massachusetts has their own. So the POST Commission was created with the goal of improving public safety. It was created through Chapter two-fifty-three of the Acts of two thousand twenty, and it's tasked with implementing police reform in Massachusetts. So the mission of the POST Commission is to ensure accountability, improve standards for training and policing, and enhance trust between law enforcement and the communities that they serve. The charge of the POST Commission is to develop certain certification standards for officers, school resource officers, and agencies, working with the Mass Police Training Committee. The Commission is a nine-member independent state agency appointed by the Governor Baker. It's comprised of six civilians and three law enforcement members. POST Commission mandates training requirements for all officers, as well as certification and decertification processes. The POST Commission will maintain databases of training for each department, certifications, employment, and internal affairs records for all officers and certifying law enforcement agencies. Since the Police Reform Bill was signed into law in two thousand twenty, our department has been working to ensure that we comply with the law. That has included a thorough review of our policies and procedures and training, and we have made changes to those as necessary. In order to retain certification, police officers must receive a minimum of forty hours of annual in-service training. And some of the recent training we've undergone with our department has been, it's included crisis intervention training, de-escalation and use of force training, responding to emergencies involving mentally ill, bias training, cultural competency, and responding to mass gatherings as well as human trafficking. Recently, we have submitted training records of all of our staff to the Mass Police Training Committee, as well as to the POST Commission. This includes certification packets of all offices and recertification packets. So each individual officer that works for our, and across the Commonwealth, as well as our agency, is required to fill out a questionnaire by the POST Commission to answer a series of questions and sign it. Chief O'Connor and I have recently interviewed all of our offices, beginning with the letters A through H, and we're waiting for a direction of the next group of officers. After researching and double-checking each officer's internal affairs files, we comported with their request to provide data. And we've currently just heard back from them, and we're in compliance. So the Commission has requested and been granted the names of each of our current full-time, as well as special police officers and former officers who have moved on from this department. Administratively, the work to complete this has increased, and it's, it's taken some time. But right now, the department is in compliance, and we've met all of our deadlines with POST. So we're currently a certified department. Each of those officers interviewed have been issued a certification number by the POST Commission, and each officer in the department has completed their annual mandated forty-hour in-service training. And we submitted the required records and documentation to POST last month. I just recently heard back that we're in compliance with the Commission, so that is good. And that is just a brief overview of the POST Commission and how it affects our department, as well as other departments throughout the Commonwealth.
Just to touch on that, on the police reform, a lot of the things that were talked about in police reform, you know, I use the one that was very popular, people talked about, were chokeholds. And that was something that we did not ever teach, our department, it's not taught in the Commonwealth, but it became, for obvious reasons, an issue for people to talk about. But we had been looking for, you know, for a number of years, you know, particularly after the Twenty-First Century Policing Report, and trying to adopt other things in there that appear also in police reform. One of the big ones that I think we should, you know, recognize and appreciate their help with the implementation of it, is the body worn cameras that we have. And that's something that, you know, we get out in front of. I think we were the seventh, in the top, first ten departments, I think, in the Commonwealth to do that. And it was important, not that we had problems, but for us to ensure that the, our community has confidence in what we're doing, and that our actions are legitimate, and that, you know, should something ever come up, that we can be transparent about it and people can do that. And it was, it's no easy lift because it's, you know, we had to, you know, upgrade, you know, some systems in our building. Our building is old, you know, we had to install Wi-Fi in different places to download it, servers and so forth. And I thank Jason Bulger and his, and his team for assisting us in getting that up and running. And again, our officers, who were accepting of it, where some places, people fight that, that type of change, our officers embraced it, and I think it says a lot, a lot about them. I think I'd like to have Lieutenant Monahan, why don't you speak about patrol?
Good evening. My name is Kevin Monahan, Lieutenant, and the side of the Patrol Division Commander. Patrol officers are assigned to shifts which provide twenty-four-hour coverage to the community. We use foot, motorized, and bike patrols, along with proactive problem-solving techniques to assist officers during their encounters with citizens and with reducing the fear of crime. One of the most useful tactics we have is called the directed patrol. And that directed patrol is we have, we assign officers to a certain area to increase the presence in that area. And some of the reasons we do that is, during that day, we may have had a call where increased officer presence is necessary. We have some information that a crime may occur, or oftentimes, is a local or national event that an officer's increased presence may put those people at ease. Some of those places we do that specifically are downtown business districts, historical districts, recreational parks, as well as places of worship. And we found that to be a very effective, effective way to patrol. Traffic enforcement by far is the most requested service we receive from the residents of the community. Speeding vehicles, it's a big cut-through community, and we receive many, many calls on a regular basis. We take traffic enforcement very seriously, and it's a priority to all our officers to go out, conduct traffic enforcement to keep the motorists safe and the traveling in and through Concord. When officers conduct traffic enforcement, location is decided by resident requests, crash data analysis, and specific needs of the community. A good example of that is when Cambridge Turnpike was closed for an extended period of time, then it reopened with fresh asphalt. It was, you know, a raceway, to say the least. So we condition the motorists to, recondition them to drive at a reasonable speed. We spend a lot of time out there. We utilize the sign and the speed boards, which are very beneficial for us, which kind of shows your speed when you're driving down the road, puts them aside, you know, slow down, or crosswalk ahead or something like that. It's very, very helpful to our, to the department. Route two is primarily the jurisdiction of the state police. We do assist the state police on Route two with motor vehicle crashes, disabled motor vehicles, medicals, and other calls. A lot, most times, we're right in the area where they could be out up in the wall or Route three or four ninety-five. So we go down, we kind of set the, secure the scene, assist motorists, and try to keep the area safe until the state police arrive and take over. To date, in two thousand twenty-two, we've conducted one thousand four hundred and seventy-six traffic enforcement directives, which resulted in two thousand six hundred and fifty-six motor vehicle stops. We responded to two hundred and sixty-seven crashes so far this year.
Wow.
I mean, it sounds, it's a little bit higher than the last two years, but I think two thousand eighteen and nineteen, I think we had like seven hundred and fifty and seven hundred. So where we're going now will still be around five hundred and thirty, which is significantly lower than it was prior to the pandemic, which is good.
Wow.
Yeah.
What, is, does the reconfiguration, the Route two rotary, have anything to do with that, or?
No.
That's the only major road change I can think of since...
It made a part of it. You know, it's hard to say. I think, you know, if you look at the statistics, with increased our enforcement in certain areas, we do some data-driven, like crash analysis. We try to saturate officers in that area to bring speeds down, maybe stop at a stop.
Yeah, so it's enforcement as much as anything.
Yeah, so it seems to be working.
Well, is there traffic, is there less traffic still than we had pre-COVID?
Still a little bit, but I think it's, you know, you can see it every week and every month, starting it back towards, you see the backups on, on the, on the roads and people cutting through, rolling them on the street and backing up Sudbury Road and things like that. So it's definitely getting back to where it was prior to.
Do those statistics include Route two or no?
They do include Route two, yes. That's all the crashes that we respond to, who we get called for.
And most of them are on Route two?
No, a portion of them, I couldn't tell you the exact number, but it's, it's a portion, but it's not a, not a fifty-fifty. Traffic enforcement is an important element for the town as they adopted the Share the Road campaign. During many weekends, we all see many bicyclists, motorcycles, and pedestrians on the roadways. We encourage everybody on the roads to do, you know, to use them in a positive manner to ensure the safety of all who use the roads. Traffic enforcement, speeding vehicles, distracted driving, hand-street law violation, which is a new law that, you know, you got to do hand-streets, so keep your eyes on the road, which is an important tactic that we order officers to enforce that as much as we can to keep the road safe for all non-motorists, so everybody can use to coexist on the roads, move with vehicles, as well as non-motorized vehicles. The chief touched upon the fleet, I'll skip that. So overall, enforcement activity is up, and the number of crashes is down compared to two years ago. So that's, we're trending in the right direction. As a department, we recognize it's important to treat all people equal. One way of ensuring that is happening is by shift supervisors reviewing racial profile and statistics monthly to ensure bias-free policing. And then each month, they sit down with their officers and review those numbers to make sure we're in compliance of what we're supposed to do. The chief touched upon domestic violence. It's probably one of the most sensitive issues we have as a department when we respond to calls. A lot of times, you see families in crisis, children often scared. The officers must be empathetic to the victims and the children to try to minimize the long-term impact of this interaction. We receive special training when it comes to domestic related calls, which assists us in that area. The chief mentioned, we average approximately sixty domestic incidents annually, about one-third of those result in arrests. The Patrol Division, we do a lot of community-oriented events. The chief touched upon the Citizens Police Academy and the picnic in the park. We also do a lot of park and walks. We just get out of the vehicle, walk around certain areas, historical areas, you know, sporting events, just try to engage the community to kind of break down the barriers when you're outside of that vehicle. That's very effective for us. We do escort the kids to school in a police car. A lot of times, we donate that as, you know, charity for a raffle. People bid on that, and then we take them to school in a car, you know, seems to be a really, you know, it's a big hit. It's one of the ones that people really want to bid on. So it's, it's a good, a good way to interact with the community. We assist with the Recreation Department's Easter egg hunt, trunk a treat in a touch a truck. We do the Special Olympics Cruiser Convoy. We also be the members of the Chamber of Commerce to try to reduce shoplifting incidents as well. So two thousand, last year's statistics for us, we logged thirty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-two calls for service. We had a hundred and one arrests, two hundred and fifty-six summons, seventeen assaults, four hundred and forty-six motor vehicle crashes, forty-six operating under the influence arrests, three thousand six hundred and ninety-two traffic citations were issued, two hundred and thirty-four larceny investigations, sixty-two domestic violence investigations, one thousand seventy-five medical assists, and six hundred and thirty-eight commercial and residential
And thankfully, no murders.
Nope.
Please don't say that.
Yeah, no, I'd say it's nice that it's not even a category, so. But I would say, is it your impression, I mean, that Concord still is a safe community from relative to others?
Extremely safe.
Extremely safe, even though the statistics are eye-opening. It's, it's still in relative terms, a very safe place to be and we thank you for that.
Before I bring the lieutenant on for the final report, we are, we are a very safe, safe community. You know, and a lot of things, you know, even like some of the traffic stuff, even though the numbers seem high, there's a, there's a lot of people, you know, going, going through town and a lot of the things are perceptions. Just doing some of the 150 historical things, when you go back to, you go back to the 20s and the 1800s, they're talking about, you know, thousands of cots coming down Lexington Road and stuff like that. So it's, it's something that we've always kind of, kind of faced here in different times. But yeah, we are, we are, we are a safe community. And I'll have Lieutenant Brian Goldman speak to you on accreditation in the Special Services Division.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good.
I will try and keep you entertained.
You can take your mic right up to your face there. Yes, sir.
I can't pull any further. So as the chief said, my name is Brian Goldman. I have been with the police department since 1992. I've been in law enforcement since 1986. I currently oversee our Special Services Division, which incorporates dispatch. It incorporates our detectives, it incorporates our records, our school resource officers, who also double as our elder affairs liaison and our juvenile officer liaisons. I also manage accreditation. Our dispatch, our dispatch is, is probably the most advanced it's ever been. When I started here, they had a typewriter up front. Now everything is computerized. They have to, they basically have to get about 12 to 14 weeks of training just on the systems, on the 911 calls, on how to enter the calls, you name it. They're trained in everything. So since day one till now, it's just, it's completely night and day. It's amazing to watch. And the dispatches that we are hiring these days, they're invested, they want to be here, they work hard at what they do and they like what they do. And it's a pleasure to work with them. And some of them want to go on to other things and that's okay. Some of them want to be police officers and we've hired quite a few of those over the last few years. So it's nice to see where we get them from point A, we bring them to point B and we bring them along and help them realize different things. Detective Division, our detective division is fairly busy. We're dealing with a lot of scams. Grandparent scam, that's a big one that's out there. A lot of people have been unfortunately duped by that. They do a lot of follow-up with that and this day and age with technology, a lot of that technology comes into play. And that technology, on the other side of it, for our detectives comes into play because it allows them to hopefully try and track down some of this. We've had some success. We've worked with our partners, our partners with the Secret Service, our partners with other federal agencies to try and identify and maybe get some funds back. And we've had, we've had some limited success, but it can be very difficult because some of these people are very, very good at what they do. Detectives are also, you know, there's cases that come in, whether it be car breaks, whether it be, we recently had a business breakout on Route 2, they follow up with that and they're trained to, to look for the obvious and the not so obvious. And again, they'll work with our partner agencies within the Commonwealth to see what they can, what they can track down and do. That particular breakout on Route 2, they, they have some leads on it. We'll see if it pans out, we'll see where that goes. Records, you talked about the logs. It's kind of funny because once upon a time with the logs, the Concord Journal used to post these paragraphs, if you will. And that changed probably about maybe seven or eight years ago. I used to send them over, that's how I know. And the Journal decided to compact that. A lot of that has to do with personal information not getting out to the public, so people aren't getting scammed.
Right.
So when that kind of compresses a little bit, it, it just takes on our own. Our logs mirror what the Journal puts out basically. And I understand people want a little more information, they're curious as to about what goes on in the neighborhood, but there is that in this day and age, that balancing act, because if we give out too much, all of a sudden people become, become victims and that's what we don't want. The big event recently was accreditation. We have been working towards this since, before I got here actually. And around, right around the year 2000, 2001, Massachusetts Commission for Police Accreditation came into being and this was one of the first departments to jump on board with that. And what was unique and special about that at the time was that accreditation, they took the national model and they broke it up into two parts. One was called certification, one was called accreditation. Certification made it a little bit more easy and a little bit more attainable for departments that were trying to standardize their policies and their practices. So they had everybody on the same page. Concord, right around then, under the, under the former chief, decided that was the best way to go at the time. And in 2006, that was the first year we became a certified agency under the State Commission. 2009, we recertified. We had a little lapse. 2021, we recertified and then we made a big push to get accredited. And in June of this year, I'm very, very happy to say we were able to do that because that was the labor of about 15 years of very, very hard work. And without the current team, the chief, captain, lieutenant, the officers that work with me on this, it wouldn't have been possible. It's not a one-person operation.
Now, out of the towns, 350 towns in Massachusetts, how many of the police departments are accredited?
Hundred and four.
Okay.
Twenty-one have certified.
We're in the top third now.
We are in the top third. There are a lot of towns, and this goes into the whole thing with Post. Post has created this environment where a lot of agencies are looking to jump on board because they want to have those practices and they want to have those policies standardized because it reduces liability, but it also provides a blueprint for the offices and the organizations to work from. And by having that in place, it holds those agencies accountable. We've been fortunate, we've had the certification policies in place, so that's helped us in a lot of different ways in terms of what we do. This takes it to the next level and I, it, it's a big milestone, it's a big marker for us to get that done. And it just goes to, I've been here since 1992. I like to think this department is invested in the town and the town's invested in us. I think we're very well-liked here and I think we do a very good job at what we do here. With that, having those policies in place in, in the times that we live and in the changes that go on, that brings our officers into focus and keeps them connected with the town. So they, they actually feel, even though they may not be from here, they feel like they're a part of the town, because that's the way I felt since 1992. And that's what was brought to me when I came here and what I'd like to see continue to be brought to the officers and I go back to the policies. It kind of just reinforces all that. Yeah, it was a big deal. The next step in all this is going to be, we're going to go for national accreditation.
National accreditation.
National accreditation. We are working towards that. I hope by this time next year, we will, we will, I, I don't think, I know, we will be there.
And how many Massachusetts town police departments have national accreditation?
Very, very few. So my previous department was, was, I think, was the first in the, in the state to do it. And the impact, the Massachusetts standards, a lot of them are derived from the national standards, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a big lift for us. But we do know, we draw people from all around the country and all, all around the world here and particularly on the West Coast, the people see those stickers on, on the police cruises out there and hopefully they'll see them on, on our cruises when they're, when they're visiting here, here at some point. Lieutenant mentioned the logs, you know, going back to the 150th year, going back to some of the old handwritten logs that these lieutenants and sergeants were writing back in the 30s and 40s. The penmanship is just unbelievable to read. Because you can't, if we write anything down, you can't read it because we're so used to typing all the time. It was really, really fascinating to see how, how they kept the records in these, in these big books and so forth and how well they were able to write.
Well, it was a little rough and tumble, you know, around the turn of the century, a lot of public intoxication cases, a lot, you know, it was, there was stuff going on in Concord.
Well, that's what, in 1872, that's what was the creation of the department. There was a fight over in West Concord and...
West Concord.
And then it, and then it just continued, the department continued to grow. But it's really interesting to read about some, some of the things about the technology and how, you know, people were taken. And this was the police station down in the basement at one time.
Wow. All right, well, I would like to give the opportunity to some of the board members to ask any questions if they have them. Do people have questions? Yes, Terry.
So what, what are some of the things that are involved in accreditation that you had to do? It sounds like you have to put all your policies and procedures and standardize them. What, what else is involved?
Start off, then you can jump in, but you gotta, you have to have proofs of what you're doing. So the accreditation team would go around and get documents proving, not only have the policy, but to be able to prove that you're, that you're doing it.
So what the, so what they look at is what they call standards. Within those standards, both on the state and the national level, they create checklists. Those checklists give us a guide and tell us what we need to have within our policies along with the supporting documentation. For instance, sexual harassment policy, county misses it every year, everyone gets it, everyone signs off on it. Within one of the standards under, under the personnel policies that we're supposed to have is we're supposed to be doing that every year. So we need to show copies of that, that it's done, along with having language within the policies that identify that we're actually engaged in doing it. So it keeps us, it keeps us, I want to use the word honest, but it keeps us, it keeps us invested in the times and it keeps us, it holds us accountable, is what it does and makes sure we have those accountabilities in place.
And a couple other quick questions. For the Regional Communications Center, what is the impression that you and the dispatchers have of how that's playing out? I guess it's a hard question to explain. Are you excited about it? Are you waiting to see, see some positive and some negative and, or, you know?
I guess I'll, I guess I'll address that, address that one. What I'd say is, is change. And, you know, a lot of people don't necessarily like change, some people fear change. But, you know, we think once this is eventually done, and it's going to be a process, that the town will, will be well-served, particularly if it's in place by the 250th. You know, we have times in our dispatch where we are overwhelmed, particularly in some, some storms. So having more, having more, more people, we think it will be better. I think situational awareness, so this is the board before, you know, having, when we call for help for acting, having the people in the same room to be able to manage, manage things, we think it'll be very, very helpful.
Okay. And finally, for the 250th, do you have a sense yet of how many officers you're going to need? Are you going to use mutual aid from other towns, statewide agencies or haven't figured this out yet?
Well, we're, we're giving, giving some thought to it, but we'll certainly be waiting to hear from the committee of what the, you know, series of events going to be. It's a, it's a unique weekend that it's happening. So, you know, whether things are spread out or confined, you know, I would, I would say certainly for some of the events, you know, we'll, we'll need, we'll need mutual aid. We'll call upon, we'll call upon Nemlik and our state and federal partners, whether we have presidential visit, that, that certainly creates some, some different challenges. But, you know, we'll have to design what we call incident action plans for, for each event. We know our training is under the National Incident Command System, so, you know, we're very familiar with that and, and we do those plans for every, for the smallest events in town to the largest events. So, you know, get some little extra training for, for the staff and I'm sure we'll be ready and looking forward to handling whatever occurs.
Thank you.
Mary.
Quick question. As you know, when we were talking about ARPA funding, we had people from the union come here and talk about all the challenges they faced during COVID and how difficult that was for them. So I guess I'm wondering, can you tell us, what do you think is the morale right now in, in the force and has this had an impact on the mental health of, of the officers?
So I think, I think at times, I think it's up and down. I think particularly in the early, the early beginning of COVID, where we really, there were a lot of unknowns and so forth. You know, particularly for families and some of the officers that got it early on, they were put in hotel rooms, you know, isolated from their families for weeks, some with young families. But yeah, it was, it's very, it's very difficult, you know, create stress for, for some, some not, not so much, everybody, everybody's a little different. But, you know, certainly talking to people definitely created some angst in households, you know, particularly if, you know, someone had, someone with some type of pre-existing condition living in the household and knowing that their significant other was going out every day, interacting with people, was raising the possibility of exposure. And there was so much unknown for it. You know, we did take, you know, a lot of efforts to make sure we, you know, kept our station clean and put some procedures in place. And if someone got, got, got sick, we offered them an opportunity to stay, stay in a hotel until they were ready to go home. Yeah, it definitely, it definitely had an impact on, on, on people. It probably still does because we still have people getting sick. You know, for second, you know, some people second and I think we might have somebody for a third time.
Yikes.
Well, thank you for all your department is doing and you certainly have earned a lot of goodwill in the community as, as the entire public safety effort in town. I have a couple of questions and that is, one of them has to do with the new landmark program that's coming in town and I think you probably had a chance to react to that initially. Do you anticipate what kind of impact that might have on services needed?
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact answer of what, what's going to happen, but I do know, you know, I haven't heard officially, but I've heard that the number of beds that they're going to put in there has increased from what they had, what they had originally told us, that it's going to be a facility that is going to, you know, have people that are going to be able to leave and walk around and so forth. You know, there, there's no doubt, there is, there is definitely a need for people to get that type of treatment. But my hope is, and if, if the people, it's been some time since we spoke with them, if they're open and communicate with us, you know, I think we should be able to handle, handle that if there's any type of problems, as long as they're open and transparent, then, then we can manage, manage things. But if, you know, if they're not cooperative, that would be, that would be a, you know, a concern to us.
Sure. Related to that, you mentioned, I believe her name was Emily Black that works with you. Is she working with you after the fact or is she going on calls with you when you...
If she's, if she's in the station with us on the day working, she will go out, she will go out on, on calls with, with the officers. A lot of it is done when we get a report and officer goes, goes to a residence or comes across somebody in the, in the, in the community. For example, we had someone who was homeless and she helped arrange a place for that person to go, you know. So she's, she's filling a lot of different, different, different needs. And the mental health issue goes from, from children all the way, all the way through to our seniors. So it's a really, it's really a broad spectrum and her, her expertise is, is a great help to us. I, I think there may be a time in, in the future, and we're going to continue to look at, at statistics and trends where there may be a time that I, you know, talk to, talk to the town manager and through the budget process, maybe a time that we put someone on full, full-time. To have somebody to go all the time in a co-response, 24 hours a day, you're talking about a lot.
Right.
A lot of people.
For sure.
If we had that luxury, would that be great? Sure.
Yeah. And then, you know, it's laudable, the amount of training and the commitment to training and keeping the force, you know, with the latest in terms, and up to date and refreshed as you called it. But you're also losing some officers to larger programs. Do you think the, the amount of training at a certain point becomes counterproductive? Not that I want to see training curtailed, don't misunderstand me, but I'm just wondering if sometimes you've, it works both ways.
I, I don't think you can ever, ever have enough training.
Right.
You know, so, you know, and there's a lot, there's a lot of talk about that, you know, with some of the, the real big thinkers of law enforcement, you know, Bill Bratton being, being one, who was the commissioner in New York and, and LA, talks about the amount, the amount of training that he thinks that, you know, police, police should have, you know, when you, when you compare policing to, let's say, let's say the military, the amount of training that military have to get ready for their operations. And I'm not saying, saying with the military, but to be able to do certain, certain things, you know, particularly, let's use the active shooter type of thing for, that is, that, those types of movements and... let's use the active shooter type of thing for, that is, those types of movements and synchronizing with other people, it takes a lot of repetition, you know, it takes, you know, it's a lot, it's a lot of work. And there's a lot of things, societal problems that have been, you know, put upon the police to do because we fill a lot of holes, and historically, from soup kitchens in New York to today, doing, you know, mental, you know, a lot of this mental health work and so forth, you know, 150 years later.
Well, you're obviously doing a good job there. I have to tell you, my favorite sign, speed sign that you use was a ticket away to a front.
So I'll give that to Ron Holtinger, a safety officer, and whoever else contributes to some of the statements he comes up with. People do get a check a lot of them, and it draws people's attention and makes people think.
Right.
Everything doesn't have to always be so serious.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. I just had one question, which was around the home locations of officers. I've often heard this is something that's expressed for fire departments, but I don't know if it's an issue that you find for the police department as well, that, you know, the difficulty of just having officers that are, that live somewhat nearby. It's not essential that they live in town, of course, that there would be benefits to that. I hear you have the special officers that are retired, that are still able to serve here, so it does seem like there's some proximity, but do you find that to be a challenge?
So our officers all live within 20 miles of the town.
Okay, and I think it's 35 for the fire department, so.
Yeah, I think theirs is out there a little more.
Yeah, okay.
Their schedules are a little, you know, a lot different than ours, but our officers all live within 20 miles.
Okay, that's good. And so you're not finding that a challenge for hiring?
You know, it limits certain pools. I mean, it's no secret that it's, you know, this area.
Expensive area.
It's expensive. And, you know, so people, you know, they make those types of opportunities, and the way policing is right now in hiring, you know, a lot of people know that they can move to different places and not have to sit on lists for years and years. I mean, when I took the police exam, 40,000 people took the exam. Now the civil service, they're lucky to get 4,000 people for the entire state. So it's challenging, but I think that we have built a culture within our department that's attracting people. We hear that in some of our interviews. Certainly, some of the improvements in the collective bargaining agreement and some improvements that town managers have been working on, some of the healthcare issues is making us a little more desirable people.
Well, and then I think the training and the accreditation, I mean, it's a professional department that people would like to have on their resume. I mean, you know, they're getting trained up. Yeah.
And we could fill positions, but we want to make sure we get very good, very good people into there, because that's what the town deserves and needs.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service, and we look forward to future discussions.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we are to discuss the town manager's goals, and we have an updated document distributed this morning. I definitely appreciate, remember last time when we had this discussion, I was saying, I have this lingering feeling, there's like a category of stuff that wasn't there. I believe now it definitely represents a much more comprehensive set of goals. So I don't have any additional feedback, but do others?
I like the fact that it's on one page.
What do the colors mean? What do the colors mean? Do they?
So the colors really only mean, I was trying to put the categories together, and when I was looking at it, it was hard for me, you know, we have the broad category, and then we have different areas. Some of them had two or three, and so I was doing it.
Okay.
It's just really for visual appearance. Yes. I like colors.
I had a question.
Sure.
And I emailed Carrie. Carrie, first of all, I think these are great. I really do. They're well-written, they're thorough. I just had one little knit, which is on goal number 30, around economic vitality, where it says research strategies, innovations, and staffing models to streamline permitting, et cetera, et cetera. I was thinking we should change that to implement strategies as opposed to research. Like, as opposed to learn more about it, let's just, I think we've learned, we're past the learning, we should implement. Are you okay with that?
It's fine with me.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, that kind of ties into a question that I have. I really like these goals, and I'm wondering if some of them are multi-year goals. I suspect they are, that 30 is a lot of goals, and I don't want to be in a situation next June where we say, well, you know, you got 20 out of 30 done, and the other 10 you didn't get done, or whatever. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, how, what would the process be for evaluating on these goals? And it's not necessarily just a question for Carrie, but some of these might be multi-year goals, so just making some progress is really good, and not necessarily finishing them in one year. I think we just need to think through as a board how this would tie into the evaluation process.
You know, there's almost nothing which can be absolutely achieved by a certain date.
Right.
I mean, whatever it is, undertake comprehensive study. Well.
Well, I mean, but by the end of the fiscal year, I would expect to see a study.
But it may not be comprehensive. That would be a matter of judgment.
Yes, but.
And if it's your undertaking.
If it's one page, it's probably not comprehensive.
But I mean.
Unless it's a set of goals, in which case it might be comprehensive.
What I mean is that, I think you just have to evaluate how much progress has been made on each of these. Some of them, it may be done 100%, like, I know in an earlier version, it was like hiring a new town manager.
Yeah.
We did that already.
Yeah.
So I think that was one of our goals, wasn't it?
It was.
It was, and still on the, I think it's still on the list.
It is, but we can now just cross it off.
Right. So I'm not bothered by the fact that some of them are more achievable within a specific time limit, and others are a little bit more subjective, and maybe can be done 50% in one year, and then you finish them up the next year, or whatever.
Right, I'm not bothered by it. I just think that as a board, we want to be pretty clear. Like personally, I would not expect all 30 goals to be finished in one year, but I'm just wondering if there's a way, or maybe Carrie, you might have some feedback about what you might be expecting. Like, for example, goal number one, do you undertake this comprehensive study of the classification and comp system? Do you expect that to be a one-year or a multi-year goal?
I, actually, we don't have an agenda item for, I don't know what your topic is, but we don't have an agenda item for this on the agenda. We do have a section of the meeting for public comment, and that is at the end. And I apologize, but also, I'm still not clear that you are a resident of Concord. I see various references to New Hampshire, so I don't know the standing, the topic, or anything, so I'm just going to continue with our agenda as planned, and we have a public comment period at the end. If you're able to stay, that's fine. If not, there are future meetings. Okay, back to our goals.
So with regard to your question, Terry, I see that particular study as having multiple phases, but there certainly will be a phase the first year, but it is ongoing because we need to be refreshing that data on an ongoing basis.
Right.
There is a discrete project that will be completed in fiscal 2022.
Right, and I only picked that one because that's just the first one on the list. I just think we don't have to solve this tonight, but the board should be really clear as to when we get there, how, this is an incredibly great list of goals and objectives, and I just think we might get into a situation where we have to evaluate, you know, is the progress satisfactory, or very good, or outstanding? And I just don't know how we're going to make that call, and maybe you have an idea, Carrie, of, like you just said, for number one, maybe each one of these, you have an idea in your head of what you think you're able to get done in one year, and if you could let us know that, it might be helpful.
Just be grateful, although we thirty.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Well, I mean, I do think that we do, we need to have a rubric for the evaluation.
Right.
Right. And we have not yet come up with that. I think that this set of goals gives us a means to develop that.
Exactly.
And my intention was, on a quarterly basis, to have a progress report available, and we've started setting up a tool to be able to track the quarterly progress, and that can be shared with you.
Wonderful, really great.
I think that would be enough for me.
Great idea.
Okay.
Then we'll get a little practice.
Right, and recognizing that management goals tend to be more subjective, and yet we do want them to be, you know, something that you can detect whether you've achieved them. Okay?
I just want to make one more comment that I specifically am really excited. I know we've made the right choice with Carrie when I see some of these, like reviewing organizational structure and enhancing communication, training, customer service, reviewing the BD center, reviewing the website. I mean, these are the things that we've been talking about and that you see, and you putting together a plan, and there's others. I just quickly went through some of them. But thank you for putting this together. I think it's really an excellent list.
Okay, so should we?
You've done, well, so far, even the first week.
Well, so should we move to adopt the town manager's goals as presented with the one change that was suggested?
Yep. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, off we go.
Very good.
The special town meeting calendar. It was added to our packet this morning.
I think the important thing, what I'm going to suggest is that we continue the discussion of this to the next meeting. I think the important thing to note is the date that we were.
Working towards.
Working towards, which is October 6?
6. Right.
Right. And we did talk to the moderator about that, and she is available. But we did put this rubric together several weeks ago, and it needs to be updated based upon this board's meeting calendar. So I would ask that you would continue this to next meeting.
All right, we'll take it up next time, and there's no urgency, really.
Not yet.
I mean, there will be, but not right now. Okay?
I did have a quick question. Are you planning to, are we required to have a FinCom report? I see that it's on the calendar, and I know we do it for annual town meeting.
We do it for special town meeting.
We do?
Anytime there's a.
There's a financial matter.
Okay.
Yeah.
So before the next time, related to the FinCom report, on the last column, on the last row, there's only seven days for the mail, and that should probably be looked at as well.
We certainly will take a look at all of those, but I believe for special town meeting, it's a shortened timetable versus annual.
Yeah, I'm just, we had deliveries that were delayed last time?
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Right, we did.
Okay, then should we take up our next item, the correction of the liquor license description for the premises of Concord Brewery doing businesses, Rep Scallion? Mike, let us know what we're supposed to do here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About a week ago, Tom Taranto, the owner of Concord Brewery II DBA, Rep Scallion, reached out looking for a copy of his 2022 liquor license. I forwarded it on to him, and he quickly got back to me and noted that the description of his premises wasn't correct. I did some research, reached out to the ABCC, and it turned out that Mr. Taranto was right. In 2019, he filed an amendment with the board, which was approved and then approved by the ABCC. It looks to me that he never actually received an updated license in 19, and then when he received his license in subsequent years, which is a common practice, he just, the office just issued him a copy of his previous license with the updated fiscal or calendar year information. This is an administrative matter, it's not an amendment, we don't need a public hearing, but we should make this right.
And then also, is it the case that Rep Scallion is not currently open?
So a restaurant doesn't necessarily need to be open as long as they continue to file, and in the case of Concord Brewery II, they have continued to file. Mr. Taranto, maybe on the Zoom call, he did indicate that he'd be available.
But I assume there's advantages to having a valid current liquor license.
And that's why, that's why oftentimes businesses will continue.
Don't they have to exercise it to keep it?
They don't necessarily. Again, I think Mr. Taranto may be on. No, he's not.
Okay.
But it's not uncommon for a business to renew their license, especially if they're looking to sell it, which may be the case for Mr. Taranto.
Right.
I was confused about the patio. I was here in 2019, and I remember them asking to change the license and adding seats in the back, and that you have to walk through the restaurant to get to these seats in the back, and I remember that whole meeting.
Yeah.
And now it sounds like they're talking about that, but also there's a, is the patio in the front or the back?
So what I did was I took the wording from the minutes in 2019 to update their license.
Right.
They're not, their capacity is not.
My recollection, it was in the back.
Right, but there is, there are seats in the front of the restaurant if you go by there.
So that could be a temporary license they'd received in the past. It's something, if you'd like, I could send the planning division out to check up on.
Yeah, I didn't know they weren't open. I thought maybe the seats in the front had to do with outdoor dining during COVID or something.
May have been, but I'm pretty sure they did close, so.
But in any event, they have a license, a current license.
They do.
And the license does not.
Reflect the deliberations of the board.
Correct.
Doesn't properly reflect what they were entitled to.
Correct.
So I think that, independent of the seats in the front, I think we can go ahead with this motion.
Okay. Move to approve the revised liquor license for Concord Brewery II DBA, Rep Scallion, dated July 11, 2022, as presented in tonight's select board meeting packet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now we need to process the continuances that were left. Well, now they should go very fast, because we don't have to.
Move at the request of National Grid, the public hearing scheduled for 6:50 PM on its application for work in Lowell Road to the House at number 925, is continued until August 29, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move at the request of National Grid, the public hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock on its application for work relating to the residents at 398 Simon Waller Road, is continued until August 29, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
I thought the date was August 29.
29.
29.
29, yeah.
29, yeah. Thank you.
Move at the request.
Hold it. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Move at the request of National Grid, the public hearing scheduled for 7:10 p.m. on its application for work in Crescent Road, Hosmer Road, Garland Road, Wilson Road, and Neshoba Road is continued until August 29, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have no nominations this week, so let's move on to.
No, we do. We have one.
Oh, okay.
We don't have a motion for it, but.
We don't have a motion. Go ahead and state the nomination.
The nomination is for Mark Galis of 62 Prescott Road to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay, thank you. And now to committee appointments.
Joshua Lee of 65 Everett Street to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission for a term to expire April 30, 2025. Anita Tekley of 260 Virginia Road to the Concord Local Cultural Council for a term to expire April 30, 2025. Pauline C. Reeve of 429 Williams Road to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2026. Frederick Ryan of 211 Park Lane to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee for a term to expire December 31, 2026. Melissa Saulfield of 7 Concord Green Unit 7 to the Historical Commission for a term to expire May 31, 2023. Rebecca Lometra of 3 Abbott Lane Unit 7 to the Historical Commission for a term to expire May 31, 2025. Francesca Cataldo of 40 Hosmer Road to the Historical Commission Associate Member for a term to expire May 31, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have just one comment.
Yeah.
Melissa Saulfield, it says May 31, 2023. But in our, I think, I believe, maybe even the minutes that we approved tonight, she was nominated until 2025, so I'm not sure which date is correct.
That should be, is it a unexpired term she's filling?
It's a correction to a previous term. So that's why it's being updated. So Melissa Saulfield, 13, was appointed to a term to expire. Maybe she was allowed to. This is a correction.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I don't know. It's getting late. That's liaison reports. Any quick updates from anybody?
Board of Health has canceled its two summer meetings for a lack of, for lack of work.
Well, that's always good if the Board of Health doesn't have work to do. Everybody's healthy. Everybody's healthy. Okay.
I have a couple of really quick things. The PEG Access Committee, as you know, they're negotiating a 10-year contract with Comcast. It expires in two and a half years. They interviewed two candidates for consultant to renegotiate the contract with Comcast and chose Busky Group out of California. This is the group that does the Carlisle and some other towns. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, besides working on Junction Park, has two new co-chairs. Nat Welch will be continuing along with Adrian Bordman. They've formed a safety subcommittee, and they're going to be meeting in a multi-town meeting with all the towns along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to talk about e-bikes, safety, and other things. And then today, I attended the Personnel Study Task Force. They're planning a series of meetings. First of all, a joint meeting with the Personnel Board on July 25. Then they're going to have a public forum and include town employees. And then finally, they're coming to the Select Board with a final report in August or September, whenever they and Matt arrange the date for that.
Okay. So it does sound like August 29 is too early for them to come before us.
I think so, but I, you should maybe check with them because they haven't set the date for that public forum yet. And one of the key recommendations is it's looking like they're going to want someone, whether it's the town manager or who it's going to be to sort through, between the 1985 document, the PPPs, and the personnel bylaws, and come up with an updated Personnel Board charge. So there's a lot going on that I'm trying to condense real quick because it's late. But you'll be hearing a lot more about this, and.
Okay. I thought that that proposed charge would be an output of the committee.
So did I. So did I.
I'm a little confused.
Yeah. There's a lot going on there, and stay.
Or not enough. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mary?
I'll go next. Quick. The Rec Department, the Rec Commission met, and Anna and Adam gave an update on the FY '22 budget for the BD Center. And it looks like FY '22, they're going to end with a budget surplus of about $1.3 million. So their revenue is higher. Yeah. I know. Their revenue is higher and their expenses were lower. So.
Wow.
Okay.
It's amazing. They don't know if it's sustainable because a lot of the expense savings were because they couldn't hire people. So they don't know how much is sustainable. And also, a lot of this will be spent on deferred maintenance. But they're doing just a great job over there trying to turn that around. So that's great. I also went to the Target painting ribbon-cutting ceremony. I spoke with Mr. Souza and asked him how he found the permitting process with the department, the building inspector. He said he had no problems, so that was good news. And then finally, you probably know about this, the municipal, the town, the state voted to extend hybrid meetings up through.
When did that happen?
No. No, no.
The last I heard, that had not happened.
Okay, sorry. The House did.
The House, the House did, and it's mandated hybrid, which.
And they're trying to have a mandated hybrid as of April 1st.
No.
Yes, mandated, mandated.
From now until April 1st.
So. No, starting April 1st, 2023.
So MMA today sent out some.
Manded.
A plea for all of us to contact their legislative reps.
So wait, let's get clear about this. What I understood is they extended the hybrid from July 15 to March.
No.
They proposed that. They haven't actually.
Proposed it. Okay. And then they had.
And there are reconciliation issues, and they may not make the deadline yet again. And as a result, we have to schedule all in-person meetings, whether we want to or not, because we don't know, as usual, that the state legislature will actually act on time.
They sent out today, though, saying that there was an amendment on the floor saying that there would be mandated hybrid meetings starting April 1st in 2023.
And is that, so that's a new problem. Right.
I'm done.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you for straightening that out.
What?
Thank you for straightening that out.
Yeah, that was a jump down the box.
Sorry. Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust meeting, had another meeting, still doing business related to the Assabett follow-up, Assabett Bluff follow-up, and also real concern about the information that came out of the Housing Production Forum, that we could be eight to 20 units shy of our goal.
Eight to 20?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a bigger number than I heard.
So, so all of the housing groups are talking about this. This will be discussed further at the upcoming Housing Production Plan Meeting, which I believe is on the 27th, if I recall correctly. So, and so ideas are already being generated, but a lot of concern there. The Concord Housing Development Corporation has just entered into agreement with this Concord Housing Authority for the short-term management of the existing house at Assabett River Bluffs.
Okay.
So they, because there's tenants in there, and they needed to have someone do the management of that. They are proceeding to see what they can do with the proposed plans for the house on Comm Ave, which Inhabitats, ready to assist with that if some details can be worked out with the town. I think that captures the majority there. And then I've got the Concord, yeah, the Concord Commission on Disability met, and they were laudatory about the adaptive bikes that have been set up in town.
Yes, those are good.
But immediately pointed out problems in terms of the location of where they are and the inaccessibility for people who could potentially use them to be able to get on them because the adaptive bike is positioned right up against regular bikes on both sides. So they were going to talk to the, to.
The vendor.
And whoever was appropriate. But again, cited this as an example that they wish they were consulted when a great idea like this comes forward. If they would just touch base with them quickly, they could anticipate some of these things. So that concludes.
So I jumped the line on my liaison report tonight with the Middle School Building Committee. I don't have any other updates. We also had a letter correspondence from Natasha Heimreth of the Volunteers of America for Concord Park stating their view on the Junction Park enhancements. And so now we are ready for public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to all your labors. I understand and I appreciate that. And it would be Michael, if you could clarify, not now, because I want to be quick, but what happened was I went to great efforts to be on the agenda ahead of time. And Matt, we can discuss this if you wish later, but.
Can you just speak into the microphone? Thank you.
We can discuss this later if you wish, but I and my parents have been living between northern New Hampshire and Concord for all our lifetimes. So I'll be glad, I'll be glad you're into that. But I'll be quick now. So I has put an email to, to Michael per request, what the purpose of this meeting was. It's to give you a report on our 4th of July gathering and an invitation, as the spirit moves you, to join us for the next step. The gathering was a commemoration, wasn't a demonstration.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm confused. The, this is, which, which group are you from?
I am the founder of the Center for American Studies. We're in our 44th year working here in Concord.
And you had an event on July 4?
Yes, to which all of you received an invitation along with our elected representatives. But I can send it again. Again, I want to be quick. The night, it's time is late, and I never made on the agenda, so I'll proceed if I may. Is that okay?
Sure.
So I'm here really on behalf of my father, Sinclair Weeks, and my daughter, Sophia Claire. I'm here to address the issue that we're all dealing with, which is the pandemic. And this commemoration we had on July 4 was to honor young, pregnant, expectant mothers who are dealing with what has been acknowledged by the powers that be, God bless them, very candidly and unabashedly as psychological warfare. I can, I will quote them themselves, as I said, absolutely unabashedly. So they find themselves under pressure 25 hours a day to, for the, for the antisocial distancing, for the masking, which robs the babes in their wounds of the breath of life. There's plenty of evidence here, and from the jabs. So the purpose was to support these young mothers and the babes in their wounds with respect to the incredible pressure 25 hours a day that they're confronted with. So we had prayers. We had songs of comfort and encouragement, and we will continue. You all were invited to come, to offer your support for these young mothers. When I mentioned my father, this is a difficult issue. I don't need to tell any of you to address the pandemic. Dad would always say, Stuart, and to all of us, there are more, there's more than one side to every story. Make a concerted effort to get all the facts, to grasp the larger picture. I've done that, friends. 24, 5 hours a day, we get one side of the story. I've also devoted time to getting the other side. There's always another side to the story. And I have some quotes to read you from that briefly. I noted that I address you all, can one say, as public servants on behalf of the people of Concord. In that regard, there's an interesting footnote to our history that I wish was in the forefront of our minds, and that is after the American Revolution was over, having started in Concord, the General Court sent out a copy of the Constitution. We had to constitute our nation to the towns and said, sign on the dotted line. That's what the towns did. They did that. They signed on the dotted line until the Constitution arrived in Concord. And Concord citizens said, no, thank you. We didn't fight this war against a central power in London to replace it with a central power in Boston. No, thank you. We, the citizens of Concord, will draft our own constitution and will send it to you to sign on the dotted line. And this step that Concord took shifted the other towns because they were folks in Concord that not only had convictions, but they had courage to stand up. The First Constitutional Convention was held in Concord because of that. These mandates we have regarding masking and so on, they don't come from our governor. They come from the CDC. In the CDC's own words, they are a subsidiary of Big Pharma, the same Big Pharma that is being, being prosecuted by attorney generals in every state in the nation for criminal activity. It has to do with just what we're talking about. So I'll draw this to an end with a few quotations. And I thank you for the time. We begin with, one second. The father of modern science, Galileo. In questions of science, the authority of a thousand may not exceed the humble and careful reasoning of a single individual. I share this because you all are invited to take part for the next gathering to provide comfort and encouragement to our young mothers and the babes in their wounds. The second quote is by the former editor of the New England Journal Magazine of Medicine, excuse me, the New England Journal of Medicine. Dr. Marcia Engel wrote, "It is simply no longer possible to believe much of the clinical research is published or to rely on the judgment of trusted physicians or authoritative medical guidelines. I take no pleasure in this conclusion." No pleasure in this conclusion, which I reached slowly and reluctantly over my two decades as editor of the New England Journal of Medicine. Finally, Jeffrey Rothschild, who I know all too well, wrote, inspiring, inspiring throw, "In order to finalize the New World Order process, we need, in effect, a Third World War to exterminate 90% of the global population. British had such a thing in mind with a revolution. This will resolve the problem of human overpopulation as well as put an end to civil disobedience. We will then proceed to automize industry and create a globalized feudalistic system in the name of saving our planet." As I said, I know Jeffrey all too well. But most significant, the High Courts in England, truth be told, determined that anybody who's consented to antisocial distancing, to masks, and to the jabs have absolutely no basis for that consent. It's null and void, and they gave a reason. Reason they gave it is because if you are exposed 25 hours a day to psychological warfare, you cannot make a rational decision. This isn't just sentiments. This is law, the High Courts in England, and.
So, Mr. Weeks, if you could conclude your remarks.
Yeah. I hope you're, I hope you're hearing them. This is the other side that we don't hear, Matt.
Right. We're at the end of the.
I've been sitting since 6:30. I was on the agenda. I was supposed to be on.
You were not on the agenda.
Well, I went through all the motions to get me agenda.
There, I don't know what those motions were that you think.
Did exactly what I was told to do.
It's.
I'll finish.
We, we conduct town business here.
As you're requesting, I'll finish. In their book, A State of Fear, how the UK government weaponized. In their book, A State of Fear, How the UK Government Weaponized Fear During the COVID-19 Pandemic, the story is told, on May 14, 2021, one of Britain's most widely read papers, The Telegraph, reported on the book, quote, "Scientists on a committee that encouraged the use of fear to control people's behavior told the COVID, during the COVID pandemic, have admitted," this is the respectable scoundrels themselves, "have admitted its work was unethical and totalitarian. Members said they were stunned by the weaponization of behavioral psychology during the pandemic." Psychologist's quotation, because psychologists have too much power and it intoxicates them. Including, Steve Baker, the Deputy Chairman of Parliament's COVID Recovery Group, said, "If we're being really honest, do I fear that government policy today is playing into the roots of totalitarianism? Yes, of course it is." So Chopinauer said, "All truth passes through three phases. First, it is ridiculed. Second is violent, we are otherwise opposed. Third, it is accepted as being self-evident." Warm welcome, friends, to join us in the next gathering. We'll send you an invitation again on behalf of our young mothers and the babes in their wounds.
Okay. Is there any other public comment from the Zoom call? I don't know if there are any other participants still in attendance. If so, use the raise hand feature, and we will recognize you. Seeing none, I think we're at the end of our meeting, so
Move to adjourn.
Well, we can just adjourn. I'm just going to, we're done with our business for the evening, so all done.
All right.
Thank you. Good night.
Form a motion to adjourn.
We don't need one. Because, just think about it, we couldn't do any more business. If we did anything else, other than adjourned, we would be out of order.
True.
Okay. It's true.